Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the Rules of Order. Council follows Robert's Rules of Order and will conduct the meeting pursuant to those rules as well as those rules set out by the council in its yearly agenda. Item number four, adoption of Elsworth City Council minutes for the following meeting, August 18th, 2025, regular meeting.
Move approval?
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Abstaining because there wasn't a present.
Item number five, Presentations of Awards. We have four awards to give out tonight. I will do them in order as they have been provided to me. The City of Elsworth proudly presents this Certificate of Service to Renee McManus in recognition of five years of service to the Elsworth Public Library. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Elsworth. Is Renee here? Okay, well, thank you, Renee. Now, I saw Sue working at the desk about three minutes ago. Did she make it in here? Not yet. What do we, we'll hold off on Sue and maybe we can get her in here. Okay, the next award. The City of Elsworth proudly presents the Certificate of Service to Jane Metzler in recognition of 10 years of service to the Fire Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Elsworth. Is Jane here? Well, thank you, Jane, regardless. 10 years is a long time. Thank you, Jane. Speaking of 10 years, the City of Elsworth proudly presents the Certificate of Service to Peter Layton in recognition of 10 years of service to the Fire Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Elsworth. Is Peter here? Thank you, Peter, in abstention. Sue?
It's our high-tech system here.
Well, she's in the building. The City of Elsworth proudly presents this Certificate of Service to Suzanne McLean in recognition of five years of service as tax collector and the city clerk. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Elsworth. Thank you, Sue.
May I unlock the doors?
Oh, no, she's here.
Are they locked right now?
They're all locked.
Oh, they are.
I come to the fire department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good to know.
Oh, I think she had a customer late.
Just ask for that to happen every time you watch him.
I'm not here to get out of the cash out.
Okay. Agenda item number six, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Chair Lyons. Got a bunch, come on in, come on in, have a seat. I've got a lot of additional thanks here and some notifications. One, the Elsworth Craft Fair, which our own Ebony has been dutifully putting together is happening on Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. over at the Moore Community Center and, what's that?
Elementary school.
Sorry, at the elementary school. I've got more center on my mind for other reasons. Ebony helped put this together last year. It was an incredible event. I'd also note that the table sales to have a table to go in there are all going for our Christmas for Kids Fund, so thank you for all the work you do, not just here in City Hall, Ebony, but to put stuff like this on for the community and for volunteerism. I think it's like the best of what we do around here. Some additional thanks to some of our cemetery volunteers, Natasha Mintz, a new cemetery committee member, as well as the Boy Scout troops did some incredible cleanup job over at the Higgins Cemetery, and I know our teams are working to get some pictures out of that for social media, so.
It is posted on Facebook.
Oh, great. It's already, it's out now and super excited about it. Another, also big thanks to the Citizens Bank's volunteers in the heart of Elsworth who did a big second round of weeding. Hopefully that gets us through the row.
Camden National.
Sorry, Camden National Bank, Camden National Bank, thank you, Tabitha, and the heart of Elsworth. So we had two big rounds of weeding here. I think, you know, downtown looked gorgeous this year, thanks to our Parks and Rec crew as well for all the work they've done there and in Oldham Park and everything's looking tip-top shape heading into the winter and will put on ice for a little while.
I drove by and saw Councilor White with a big smile on her face and a, I think it was a leaf blower or something.
And I've got a couple additional awards too for tonight. I know sadly, I think this is going to be Counselor Beal's last in-person meeting with us. She's a personal obligation previously scheduled that will mean we can't join as a group, so it's kind of a sad time for me and I think for a lot of us. I know we had an election last cycle where Steve was re-elected and Tabitha, who's also like Casey on the Arbor Commission, I felt like in some ways I've known this council for over a year and a half now and, you know, the group, the band's kind of, you know, breaking up in some ways and Sarah and I and our HR teams are thinking like, you know, how do we kind of honor the, you know, both, I think for Michelle and for Tammy, their long dedication and service to the City of Elsworth and also as counselors as well and kind of the highest form of public service and what can we do to kind of keep their spirit alive here in the city. And we're announcing two new awards, the Moat Award for Excellence in City Government and the Beal Award for Leadership in City Government to go to two of our highest employees. And I'm going to send it over to Sarah to do the, the Moat Award.
Well, thank you, Charlie. It is my privilege to present the first Moat Award for Going the Extra Mile. The Moat Award was created by the City of Elsworth to honor the extraordinary service of Tammy Moat, who has dedicated nearly 25 years to this community. Tammy began her career here on May 8th, 2000 as Deputy Treasurer slash Tax Collector. She went on to serve as the Finance Director, modernizing city financial systems, and in July 2018, she was appointed as the Deputy City Manager. Tammy's commitment to excellent accountability and compassion has left a, has left a mark on city government. In November 2022, Tammy was elected by the people of Elsworth as a city counselor, continuing her tireless service to the community she loves. This week marks Tammy's final council meeting, closing an extraordinary chapter of public service. The Moat Award recognizes individuals who go above and beyond their responsibilities. It honors those who serve city operations, show initiative, resilience, and collaboration, and who make meaningful contributions behind the scenes. It celebrates the spirit of service that Tammy has embodied through her career. Today, we are proud to recognize the first recipient of the Moat Award, Tina Vinettastein. Tina, I have a lot to say about Tina, too. Tina is known for her huge heart, her unwavering commitment to service to the disadvantaged residents of Elsworth. She is a dedic, she is dedicated to her coworkers, always the first to lend a helping hand, and she does this with humility, never seeking credit or fanfare. Tina brings laughter and positivity into the workplace, uplifting those around her while also dedicating herself to solving problems and supporting her community. When my two-year-old daughter Sadie comes into City Hall, she demands three things: Tina, chocolate, and stickers in that order. Tina represents exactly what this award is all about. Her selflessness, commitment to service, and ability to uplift those around her have made a lasting impact on Elsworth. The Moat Award ensures that Tammy Moat's legacy of professionalism, compassion, and dedication will continue to inspire others for years to come. Honoring Tina as the first recipient shows that that spirit of service is alive and well in Elsworth. Congratulations, Tina, and thank you both for your extraordinary contributions to this community.
Thank you, Sarah, Tina, and Tammy. And Tammy, I just, you know, can't say enough on how much you've meant to me in this organization and helping out. Most folks probably don't know, but Tammy and I are on the phone all the time for the last year and a half. I hope as a counselor, you know, you'll still pick up my calls. But she was here just before in the attics with Tina, trying to work on something for the Cemetery Commission. That's just, that's the best of Elsworth, so. On to another best of Elsworth is our establishment of the Beal Award for Excellence in Leadership. We're excited to announce the creation of the Beal Award for Leadership in City Government, a new annual award honoring and recognizing city government employee who has demonstrated the highest level of public service, creativity, and commitment to the City of Elsworth and this community. The award is named in honor of Michelle Beal, whose decades of service and leadership set a lasting standard for public stewardship in Elsworth. Michelle began her career as a Deputy Tax Collector, Deputy Treasurer slash Tax Collector, quickly moving her way up to be Finance Director, and her early leadership skills were recognized. She was appointed interim City Manager multiple times until she ultimately took over the role as City Manager full-time. During her tenure, it was defined by bold vision, prudent fiscal management, and a deep commitment to community well-being. Among her many achievements were the Commerce Park development, spearheading the creation of Commerce Park, which has generated an enormous amount of tax revenue and expanded access to water and sewer services and created new business opportunities, the preservation of community space all over the City of Elsworth, but specifically the historic Moore School, Elsworth's first and still only large community center. The Dalton Park development, the city's largest and most popular family recreational space, where you see thousands and thousands of people going every single summer. It's an absolute anchor for families all over the region, and the happiness that's created there is in large measure due to her work. And she also raised a ton of money for that, I'm sure with Tammy's help and the rest of the team, said it wasn't all on taxpayer expense. It's kind of the last piece on her fiscal prudence. I know my time as City Manager and her dedication towards that as well as Tammy's, that, you know, that there's big pressures we have here, but creating a lean, mean, efficient, financially sound system, I think when I look back at, at Elsworth, it was incredible collateral accomplishment, limited resources. After retiring from city service full-time in 2015, she became the Chief Operating Officer of Redmond Winchell, one of the Maine's largest law firms, and in 2022, motivated concerns over the direction of the city, she successfully ran for City Council and has helped stabilize municipal operations, strengthened financial processes, and to me, in some ways most importantly, mentoring a new generation of leaders here in Elsworth so that the next phase of the city can be set up for success. The first Beal Award is going to be going to Nate Brokhardt, our Deputy IT Director for the City of Elsworth. Nate is a 15-year visitor into the organization. I'd say he's kind of the glue holding together countless aspects of city operations. 15, 20? 11, sorry. Sorry, I had, I have some edits here. It's kind of hard, we had to, we had to keep this somewhat secret from them, so I was unable to. But he's the glue holding things from IT service requests to, I think he was in a bucket truck over at the school.
Yeah, we're putting the flashing lights in high schools in a bucket truck on last Tuesday or Thursday, whatever.
Pretty much every major data and process modernization the city's seen over the last 11 years. I know during my tenure, short tenure here, whether it was the budget transformation process, getting the tax commitment out, Nate's always the first person we go to. He also has, I think what's central to leadership is the ability to take personal responsibility for the success of the organization regardless of his role as, you know, the deputy. You know, he's critiqued me often, many times, and rightly so. He's helped other pieces of the organization that aren't in his job description because he just wants to see others in this city succeed. As I've kind of talked to Sarah about, you know, if there's some major accident in the city, it's Nate and Tina, not Sarah, it might be that we need, we all need to keep, keep here. I just, you know, he's such an incredible person and that's why we're glad to give him the first Beal Award for Leadership in City Government. I'll give it to him. And that's it for my City Manager Report today.
All right, tough act to follow, Committee Reports. Equally as important. Do we have any, anyone to report out from any committee work?
I'll say a thing. From my role on the Solid Waste Committee, I attended the Trash Talk Fair, which happened at the Moore Center this past weekend, it was on Saturday. It was exciting. It was fun. We talked a lot of trash. It was a great turnout as well. There was a couple city managers, I'm sorry, there was a couple city councilors there, Counselor Smith, I was there, City Manager, Economic Development Manager as well. Yeah, it was exciting. We heard from some composters, we heard from folks operating in all different areas of the solid waste spectrum, from food waste, which is kind of my passion from my business, and compost and solid waste removal, with the overall goal of starting to hone in on ways to reduce costs to taxpayers here and also to help the ecology of our community as well. So exciting stuff. Green Elsworth was there. I'm sure there'll be a report at some point that we can look at, and I'll be taking some of this back to the Solid Waste Committee as well.
Thank you, Counselor Stein. Any other, anyone else want to report from committees? Counselor Smith?
For the Cemetery Commission, but I do want to say I went to the Trash Talk and really interesting components I saw, and even looking at the business perspective, where Jackson spoke about what they're doing for reducing waste and the impact it has on their bottom line. So it was really well designed. Whatever your interests were, there was, there was some place for you to pick up good information, so kudos to them for that. In addition to the update on the Higgins Cleanup, which as we said is now up on Facebook, it was nice to, the, the commission has been eager to get out and literally get their hands dirty, and a member of the commission who's connected her son is in Boy Scouts was able to do a terrific cleanup at the Higgins Cemetery. And in addition, just to shout out to Roddy, who managed in his new role, number one, came to a commission meeting, which was terrific at the beginning, and shared that there was a concern about saplings that were on the boundary line for the ancient burial ground over this way that were actually intruding into the church foundation. And he was able to go in and just take care of it. Part of taking care of the cemetery, or this, in this case, an ancient burial ground, is making sure that the trees aren't impinging on the graves, but also not on the neighbors. So the commission thanks you for just stepping up and taking care of that and letting us know about it later. So the commission is bumping up to working, to meeting every other week together. They're still working on the, the structure and the budget for the work moving forward, but it's an energized, really positive group, so that is the report from the Cemetery Commission.
Great, thank you. Any other councilors? Yeah, or maybe we can crack a few windows, get some fresh air.
Yeah, fresh air is good.
Councilor White?
Reporting on the Arbor Commission, last, I believe it was last week now, we had a meeting with the public about the forestry management plan for the new, well, the Elsworth Public Forest plus the newly acquired land that we have there, and got great feedback from the public, so we are on track to still have the final plan for October. And then we've also completed a ash, a rough ash count in Elsworth. Again, we have city-owned ash trees that may be or will be affected by Emerald Ash Bore in the next 10 years, probably less. We'll start seeing the impacts of that, so we are hoping to understand what our ash population is. We've done a rough count of what the, the ash population is and our right-of-way is coming up around 500 trees, so looking at that and diving into that to make sure that we make a solid recommendation to the Parks and Rec Department and are also in order, for the Arbor Commission to budget, however that ends up happening, in order to treat some of these trees, to protect them. That's where we're at.
Great, thank you. Any other councilors, committees? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Comments. This is the part of the meeting where we invite citizens to provide comments on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to under three minutes. And with that, is there anyone here that would like to provide citizen's comments? Please come to the, come up front and please state your name for the record.
My name is Judith Felch, and I live at 40 Birch Avenue in Elsworth. And this is a comment about a code, which I'll get into in just a minute, but first of all, I wanted to tell you, I wanted to thank you. I came in and I met with the City Manager, the Code Enforcement Officer, and a policeman who represented Animal Control, and I wanted you to know that all three men were kind, articulate, professional. I felt very welcome, and in this day and age, what is happening around the world in the United States, I think it's important to recognize and acknowledge government officials who are kind and exhibit a great deal of care for the citizens. So, that said, I'm going to speak to Code 802.4, which is your code that has to do with farm animals, specifically roosters and chickens. Now, in that code, roosters are prohibited. They're addressed in the code as noise and nuisance animals. My neighbor for months has kept a rooster that has, begins making noise at 3:30 a.m., continues crowing all day. The Elsworth Code Enforcement Officer does not have any tools at his disposal for the immediate enforcement of this code, in other words, for the simple removal and rehoming of this rooster. Code 802.4 also has chickens. Chickens, unlike roosters, are allowed if they're in a run. My neighborhood has chickens and 12 to 25 freely run in my yard every day. Code Enforcement can file a court complaint, which usually takes a year to resolve. Once again, he has no tools for immediate resolution. Consequently, these flocks roam in my yard, they've dug up iris and spring bulbs, they've decimated and reduced a whole garden bed to mud, scraping out flowers by the roots, nipping tops off of seedlings, digging holes in beds and in the lawn. They've scraped all the moss and mulch from around bushes and my whole basement edge, completely around my house, allowing for erosion and water to go in the basement. They've lacerated my deer fencing, costing me time and money to repair. One area's happened a third time, and I have to go out and buy more deer fencing. I sought relief by talking to the neighbor. He told me to get off his property. I called Animal Control, which is a division of the police, they only deal with dogs. This is also drawing wild animals to my property with a fisher weasel seen outside my back door and a chicken carcass in my backyard as, soon as, night before last.
Ms. Felch, that's your three minutes, if you could conclude your comments, please.
Yes. I am asking to give Code Enforcement what he needs to solve these issues quickly and effectively. I want this nuisance resolved. I can have property ruined, my peace taken away, but I'm not allowed to catch and rehome these animals because they are not my property. Chickens are just doing what they are born to do. It's the owner who is the bad actor. Thank you.
Everybody clap now. For my sister. That's my sister, 40 Birch Avenue. She's my big sister and I love her and I live with her right here, just a couple blocks from here, and I wanted to, this morning.
Could you say your name for the record?
Oh, Suzie Shepherd, sorry. I wanted to play, I just walked over to my bedroom window this morning. This is not enhanced in any way, and this is what I hear, starting at 3:30 for 20, every 20 seconds the entire day. Starting at 3:30, and we have had to try to find a place for me to live in the house. We're, we're trying to find places where we can live so that we can actually sleep. I would like for you all, for you all, and for you all, because empathy, law without empathy becomes a terrible thing, to have empathy for my sister and I and for all of our neighbors that are understanding this, including the people in the nursing home. Our house backs up to the nursing home on the Cove Nursing Home. I'd like for you to meet to the, march to the beat of my drumstick, a bone we can pick together tonight about chickens. I'd like to stop chicken vandalism. They vandalize as much or more than people who, if they were in that same position, would be caught and put in jail. And there also, I would like to have the illegally kept roosters removed immediately. My family's plants are being killed, they're dead on arrival, they're decimated by a murder of hens. I am sleep deprived. A rooster crows outside my window every morning as I just played. This week, I looked into my sister's eyes, and her beautiful eyes were, were crying and tearful because she discovered that our neighbor's chickens had systematically ripped out her deer fencing, causing her loss of time, money, and garden gifts, that she donates to Elsworth Church Services and to the neighborhood, people that live off the street, that live across the street in the group home, and that times have been homeless and have come over and told her that they're grateful for the first time living across the street from someone who's so generous and provides so many opportunities for them to have something beautiful. From my window, I see nursing home wheelchairs now stopping dead in their tracks because the hens come every morning and they rode a till, the mulch, and put it all over. I've got pictures of all this, all over their only concrete walk where the, the walkers and the wheelchairs go. Last night, a fisher weasel ran out. I went out to get something out of my car and literally fisher, fisher weasel saw me stop and then rushed under my sister's house, and that explained the dead chicken carcasses now in our yard illegally.
Ms. Shepherd, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's your three minutes. Could you conclude your statement, please?
Yeah, they're illegally kept roosters. I want to thank the, a good City Hall employees like Robert Grant and Charlie Pierce that they need your help in removing the obstacles that prevent the removal of 24-hour crowing chickens and the guilty chickens vandalizing our yard because they can do the same to you. So please march to the beat of my drumstick, a bone we can pick together and stop chicken vandalism and remove illegally kept roosters from Elsworth.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Council members, good evening. It is a pleasure and a privilege to be here. I really appreciate it.
Could you state your name for the record?
I haven't gotten there yet.
Sorry, he's due.
My name, I'm going to more or less read what I've written to keep it under three minutes. My name is Coco Preston. I live across the street from Ms. Judith Felch, and I am here to witness and advocate on behalf of her, at her, in her, in her request for assistance. There are at least three issues to address. There are at least three issues to address. Number one, a neighbor's rooster. The rooster crows at any hour, day or night. His crow is intrusive and disruptive. And he is really, truly real. Number two, the neighbor's hens. The flock of hens roam into Mrs. Felch's garden. Their continuous pecking and scratching cause a lot of damage to her garden. And number three, perhaps this is the problem, a neighbor who is unresponsive. Mrs. Felch has approached the owner of the rooster and flock of hens. She has asked him to please, please manage his chickens, a reasonable request for accountability. He is not interested. I'm sure you know that a garden requires an investment of time, attention, and money. Mrs. Felch has created an oasis of cheer and hope for others. The sight of those lovely flowers gladdens sad hearts, and we have a lot of those. Please listen to Mrs. Felch. She has good, practical, specific suggestions. If your words have no teeth, get them. A law that cannot be enforced is useless when dealing with wallless people. Please do not encourage the bully and discourage the victim. And as always, remember the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Thank you for listening. I'm done.
Thanks.
Can I speak under public comment?
Sure.
I'm so sorry, I should have had, mentioned this to Charlie, to mention that we are having our first public meeting for the Village Partnership Initiative this Thursday night at the Moore Center from 5:30 to 7:30. There's a survey up online, so would love to just put the word out to have folks attend or take the survey. Sorry to say it during public comment.
Could you give a little more background on the Village Partnership Initiative?
Sure. I got the time and not the date. I think it's on my calendar. Thursday, 5:30, this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30. The Village Partnership Initiative is an initiative that we have been working with, with the Maine Department of Transportation, which is looking at once-in-a-generation levels of investment in our downtown, Main Street, Water Street, up to Christian Ridge. We're in the planning phase right now, which is a, I believe, 80/20 partnership in funding, but the construction phase is a nine-to-one match. So for every 10, for $9,000, there's $1,000 of city match. So this is about an 18-month-long effort. We got started a little late with my onboarding, so the 18 months started about three months ago. So this is our first of many public hearings and listening sessions. And I too should have sent this to Charlie. But again, at the same exact time, Heart of Ellsworth is hosting Ellsworth Original Commercial District, which is a walking tour of the proposed downtown historic district that is being nominated to the National Park Service at the end of the year. We are hosting a walking tour that is going to feature the 43 different properties that are part of the nomination. And we are starting at 5:30 in front of Provender, and they are also sponsoring the event with some tasty treats for everyone to try before we get off on footwalking the downtown district. We do ask folks to go onto our website to go and RSVP so that we can have some numbers for Darren so he can prepare enough food. Thank you, folks.
My name's Scott Nickel. I live at 29 Upland Way in Ellsworth, which is technically still in Ellsworth, even though we don't be considered that way. I've been in discussion with Councilor Stein for a year, year and a half concerning the lack of extending fiber out to our area. I live on the other side of Graham Lake. I've lived here for 21 years. The first 12 years I was here, I couldn't even get DSL.
Mr. Nickel, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this matter, I believe, is on our agenda tonight.
Okay.
And you'll be, have the opportunity to speak then.
Okay.
Public comments for matter, items not on the, tonight's agenda.
Okay. I was unaware. Thank you. Actually, I think John did let me know that, but, okay.
We'll get to you, we promise. Thank you.
Are you able to stick around?
For about a half an hour. And if I can't be here, then I'll leave.
Well, we can, maybe we can move it around to make sure we get to you. Anyone else for public comments? Okay, seeing none now. Item nine, councillor comments. Councillor Halloran?
I have a comment. I had, I have a visual aid here as well. I had many calls about the tax bill this year. In the last few days, we've received a lot of calls concerning the taxes in the city of Ellsworth. And I just would like to remind everybody that this council and other councils, future councils, every time we raise our hand to spend money, there's a good chance Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth have to bring money to City Hall. I think that needs to be said, because when we do this and commit to spending money, Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth have to bring money to City Hall. Every time we do this, they have to bring money to City Hall. Every single time. And I think, hearing the taxes and the complaints that I've heard this week, it needs to be reminded with this council and other councils that when you vote to spend money, don't forget, Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth have to bring money to City Hall. Thank you.
Any other councillors with comments?
Curious if there has been, I know some of these folks visited you and spoke with you and the code enforcement officer. Is somebody working on this? Is this something we can get or maybe don't need to because we're already digging into it?
Yeah, a few things, yes. As mentioned, we had some good conversations. I think Ebony and I, we've added to the workshop. I think there's kind of two stages to this. Sometimes, like, you know, I feel like, you know, the Bray Avenue was a really tough one, it's been a lot of work. This one, I feel like we can't help. There's actually a few kind of similar citizen issues that kind of came up. The roosters, you know, that's not allowable. And I think that's really offensive to have to live next to a rooster. It's horrible. And to write letters to somebody is our only enforcement mechanism. You know, I think I could see adding a tiering up of fines potentially, and maybe it's, so I want to have legal counsel. But I also want to talk in public session in the workshop with the council to see, you know, if they would be amenable to giving the code enforcement increased authority here. Now, the code, that's an issue for a lot of code stuff. They send letters. I'm not quite comfortable with giving broad authority to code, but on this specific issue, I could see that. But maybe councillors disagree, and I'd love to hear more comments. There was another one that came up on a bike, electric bikes on sidewalks, which I think is kind of similar way to say citizen, kind of, it's not illegal to ride a bike or e-bike on a sidewalk. And I think that does present a danger. And the gentleman who's, you know, I spoke with about this, it happens quite often, and I think it's another one of those, you know, it might seem like a small issue, but, you know, bikes, especially e-bikes, are not appropriate to be driving around sidewalks. And if we don't have laws in the books for that, I'm usually, and we're doing ordinance review, I'm usually trying to, I'm on the deregulate side and make it easier for business and not add things. But some of these, like better enforcement for roosters and e-bikes, I think would be helpful. And also, I share councillor Halloran's concerns about taxpayers and spending. We had a 13% increase, almost 14% increase in government spending in Castine this year. I think my taxes almost doubled. That's why we worked really hard to get 2.9% inflationary increase as a council this year. Municipal side net was down negative .4. The school was up 5.9%. The county, I think, was up eight or nine percent. So I think it's also really important to know what are the big drivers of spending as well. And I worked with councillor Halloran and others on some, you know, it's expensive on some of the, you know, the unit negotiations with some of our public safety and other units, and well deserved for our employees to be getting more funds in that category. But it's a very, very difficult issue, and we take city spending very seriously here at City Hall.
Wanted to let Mrs. Felch know, this isn't, you know, the three of you speaking into the void, we're listening, and there's, it sounds like there's plans to continue discussing this and figuring, figuring this whole thing out.
Can I just ask a question? Why can't code enforcement enforce that code?
I think it's, I could have Robert come up if he wants to, but I think they can basically send letters, and it's a long process, but they're not able to, like, immediately. Same thing with police.
Good evening. Robert Grant, code enforcement officer. I can enforce the code, it's just the mechanism that we have to enforce it is long and without much teeth. It's the similar situation that come up with everything is where I have to send a letter and inform the offender that they have violated one of our ordinances. I have to give a certain amount of time for them to fix that problem. If they don't, I send a second letter, a third letter, and then eventually, the only recourse I have is to take them to court over it, which takes quite a lot of time. There are some cases that, for land use issues, not chickens necessarily, but other things that I, were started before I became the code officer and I have not been resolved yet in court. They're still ongoing. So they can't, and I don't think chickens would take that long, but that's, the court process can be long. So there's, I don't have any immediate way to stop someone from having those chickens or the rooster and bring an immediate resolution there, unless they're willing to fix their action.
And from the police side with animal control, you know, if it was a dog that was dangerous or, you know, there's mechanisms there, but it seems like this rooster is in a little bit of a different area. You can't just commandeer it, take it away, even though it's on the books. So, you know, I'll bring it to council, I'll probably start looking at some legal options, what other cities and towns have done about this. But, you know, I can see it outside of the urban core, you know, having roosters and chickens, it's part of life in rural America. But two blocks away from here, right next to another house, a rooster growing all the time and having to wait a year while it plays out through the process, I'm not too pumped about it, so.
Because we did have some on Elm Street at one point, and they were made, they had 30 days to get rid of them, or they were going to be collected and taken.
Yeah. I'm not aware of any mechanism of enforcement power that I have to collect them and take them away.
I want to, I want to dig in a little bit.
Why is it that if a rooster's illegal?
What, sorry, there were-
I'm sorry, yeah, I shouldn't have asked that question.
We're doing the workshop, we're going to get more information, I promise, yeah.
As you're preparing the workshop, I guess I would ask you to include clarification on code enforcement. My understanding from dealing with this on the state level is, it's wrong that dog licensing is the only thing that contributes to that cost as we went through the budget. It's not my understanding that's all that they can address, that if you've got a raccoon, if you've got a rabid animal. My understanding has been they can. So I'd like clarification on why this isn't an animal control issue that surprises me.
I'll re-follow up with our police and our, the police handle animal control here.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, and there's two violations here. There's the rooster, and there's also that the chickens are not in a coop.
Keeping the coop and the chickens in there, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem. I want to get to resolution as quickly as possible. And hearing that noise would not be great.
Thank you, Robert.
Could we clarify for the record, and these nice ladies that spoke, number one, thank you for speaking, I know it's difficult to do. And number two, could we clarify, you're mentioning a workshop, could you clarify the date when the workshop is so these people could come back?
October 6th.
October 6th, and Chair, or former Chair Bureau. I'll look into some of those other pieces you mentioned before and talk to the attorney. And if there's something quicker and it doesn't have to wait until the workshop, and I have interim authority, great. The bike one, I'll probably come back at least, but these can both be related.
So for clarification, there will be a subject matter on October 6th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers with a workshop, and one of the items will have rooster management.
Yep, and bikes.
Unless we come up with a solution beforehand.
Beforehand, and it might, you know, it might be a hybrid of both. And then also, like, these workshops are designed, you know, we'll be sort of looking to prep something for the October council meeting if an ordinance change is required. So we have something there.
If the rooster were in your office, would you wait?
Sorry, we're-
Any other councillor comments? Seeing none. Onto the consent agenda. Council order, Council Order Number 092500, request of the deputy city clerk to prove the time polling places will open for the November, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much. Places will open for the November 4th, 2025 State of Maine election and the City of Ellsworth municipal election as 8:00 a.m. Anything, discussion or?
Can't.
That's right. Emotion?
Nope.
Nope.
You gotta do both.
See, that's why you're still here.
Transition time. And then we do it together as a consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll tell someone once it's removed.
So we're just vote, sorry, can you say that?
10 and 11.
10 and 11 together.
Oh, 10 and 11, ah, I see, I might have to go on the second page. Council Order, I failed. Number 092501, request of the deputy city clerk for appointment of wardens and ward clerks to four voting districts within the city of Ellsworth for the November 4th, 2025 State of Maine election and City of Ellsworth municipal election.
I want to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Number 12, new business, public hearing and action of the applications for renewal for the following licenses. Hannaford Supermarket and Pharmacy, number 8123, 225 High Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, for renewal of a state agency liquor license, store license. James B. Card II, doing business of Jimbo's Junkin', 32 Kylie's Way, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard license. Darren Goldstein, DBA, Provender, 112 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, vicular and liquor, and renewal of the state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 malt spirits and Venus liquor license. And Shaw's Supermarket, number 57, 175 High Street, for renewal of a city Class C license and renewal of a state agency liquor store license. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it to public comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Mr. Herr, you have to approve all licenses as written?
Second.
Any discussion from council? Councillor Halloran?
For clarification, I think you said Jimbo's Junkin' was 32 Kylie's Way and it's 62 Kylie's Way, and it's a small thing, but I don't want some neighbor coming on down.
Got it. 62 Kylie's Way. Thank you, Steve. Councillor Remo?
Is everything paid and full and everything secured? Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Remo. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor? Item number 13, council order number 092502, update from the finance director on the 2024 audit.
Good evening, council. Just, everyone's aware, we have just finished the FY24 audit, as was done by R.R. Smith. And with us tonight, I have Ron Smith here to discuss this audit, so I'm going to pass it off to Ron Smith.
Hey, folks.
Hello. We can hear you.
Listen, if I knew there was going to be some hot topics there, I actually got stuck in traffic. I'm in Bangor right now. I could have, I could have been there and probably had a couple, a couple of water, you know, and some dessert here before that. So I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it there physically. I just ran out of time, but, you know, but I'm glad I can be there virtually. So, so as Nate said, we have landed the plane finally for the 6:30, 24 audit. You have our highest opinion, you know, that we've got out there. And to kind of like just go over the specifics, Nate, do they all have, do you have the ability to share the screen so we can hit some highlighted pages of this, Nate?
Sure.
So let's start with page 19, Nate, of the- So let's start with page 19, Nate, of the audit report. So here's your general fund governmental balance sheet as of 6:30 24. And Nate, if you can just scroll down so we can capture all the, right there, good. So there's all the funds for the city, all the major funds that you have. General Fund, there's the operating budget of the, of the city. As you can see, you've got about $10.5 million worth of assets against liabilities and obligations of about 5.8, you know, leaving you with fund, fund balance, equity, carryover balance in the governmental world of about almost $4.7 million. That's down from about $600,000 in totality from last year. Last year, you were a little north of 90 days of your operating budget. This year, you're right at 90 days. And the reason being is, is last year you'll see some assigned fund balances, and we spent a lot of time, you know, with transfers, capital projects, wishes of councils, restrictions, assignments, and we actually moved them, you know, you guys, instead of assigning them into your general fund, we actually moved them and spent a lot of time, you know, moving them to the appropriate column, so you're showing actually your true general fund balance, you know, as of 6:30 24. And, and, and 90 days, our thresholds say that's where you want to be, you know, in the world of government. So education, you know, certainly, you know, is, is financially healthy, and probably to kind of like preface all of this, you know, is that we met with the Finance Committee about two weeks ago, had a similar dialogue and discussion with them. So, and I'm, I'm just hitting the highlights that we did with them. Conversation piece in the third column there with your capital projects fund. You guys have been busy, a lot of infrastructure projects, lot of timing and delays in finalizing debt proceeds, you all, you know, with, with attaching them to capital projects. So, so a lot of that money, we think June 30, 2025 is really going to be the year, kind of where all that stuff catches up. But as I said at the Finance Committee a few weeks ago, and I'll say tonight, I still think you're going to be a little shy of a million dollars with capital cost and overruns from some of the infrastructure projects that you've had going on for the past four years of the city. You know, I think even with the debt proceeds, there's still going to be cost overruns, you know, with capital projects, and that's looking like it's probably going to hover right around that million dollars. So, so Nate, can you go to page 21? And there's really the money you all coming in and out of the city. You can kind of see, you know, where the city's money's, you know, coming in, $31 million, almost $32 million coming into the city. Between the general fund operating budget, what you actually spent in transferring, you know, the school's appropriation over to the school department, you know, the city, you know, you can see your fund balance went down by about, so the $850,000 after we moved all of the money to its appropriate place, capital projects, TIFs, some other earmarked monies that you had out there, you know, for the school, et cetera. Instead of assigning to fund balances, we've actually moved them and transferred them over to the appropriate columns, you all, you know, so that, so that the, 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 the column presentations, you know, now, you know, have all the true activity into it, as opposed to the general fund holding on to some of the transfers, you know, that, you know, that were representative, again, TIFs and capital projects being the, being the big one. So, big, big ones. So, so there's the overall financial condition, you know, of the city, 90, 90, 90 days of fund balance. You know, again, right where our standards say that you want to be. One of the big other conversations that we had, Nate, if you could go to, to page, Nate, 23, I believe. Yep. And this is your utility departments, you all, ones that are supposed to be self-sufficient, ones that have had a lot of upgrades and infrastructure in them. And as you'll see, you know, Nate, just scroll down a little bit. There's an emphasis still on the wastewater fund, you all, of that operation deficit that's gone back for a very long time, you know, at the city of about $2.5 million. It led to, about two years ago, the city's bond rating getting downgraded. Why, why they picked two years ago when, you know, it's, the city's always been in that position? That's a question that was asked to the rating agencies hard. We really didn't get a good answer, but clearly that was the, you know, the rationale for dropping, you know, the city's bond rating was the operational deficit, you know, and it's wastewater fund. That's probably the, 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 the last biggest conversation, you all, of, you know, of this product, is really kind of, what's the plan, you know, that we've talked about, you know, need to continue to talk about on how you're going to pull yourself out of that deficit, so. So again, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, we'll do it later.
Councillors, any questions for Ron or his team on the audit?
Yeah, can I just say one more thing before, you know, as we kind of like went over the map? This, this was a tough year. I know you guys have engaged Sue Lassard. You know, we've had a lot of conversations with her in the direction of, you know, really kind of, you know, thought process on, you know, what the city needs to do to kind of pull itself out of this hole, you know, here, and, 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 and start, you know, covering, you know, shoveling it in, you know, a lot of process and procedures. I'd say the big thing that really was the challenge, you know, here, you know, this year, you know, besides all the reconciliation work that was done in this Herculean effort, your side, our side, was, was really the, the change in fiscal softwares in '24 really, really, really put you guys over the edge. You know, I mean, I think that that strained every ounce of infrastructure, you know, internally for human resources that you had. And what made it even almost more impossible is reconciling and auditing six months, you know, in one software and reconciling an audit six months in the other, making sure all those balance came, came over. So there was a lot of work that was done, you know, to bring this across the finish line. We've had a lot of conversations in depth with Sue, you know, really how, what that looked like. We think that there's going to be some similar problems, you know, again, in fiscal year '25, but I think once you can get through this fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 audit, the city certainly, you know, will, you know, will, you know, I think it addresses some of the concerns, you know, that we outlined in our management letter that I know Sue has talked to you all about and will continue to talk to you about. I really think that there could be a light at the city end of the tunnel, certainly if, you know, a lot of that corrective action plan is actually put in place, and I think some of it has been already. Charlie and Nate can speak to that as they did with the Finance Committee, but, you know, we, we, we see some light at the City of Ellsworth, but '24 was a terrible year fiscally, just for all the reasons that I cited.
Yeah, no, first of all, thank you to Ron and his team, and especially to Tammy from your team. Ron was the former, I think, Madison Finance Director, and, you know, she's been meeting with our team and really getting things out to snuff. This, this fiscal year is already nine months over by the time I arrived, but like reading this audit, this is exactly, you know, we hadn't finished a budgeting software integration yet. When I asked like what's budgeted for actuals, everybody just said, I don't know. And if you go to 100, page 111 here, you see all the budget overruns, you know, on a variety of departments. Most Public Police was budgeted $1.8 million, you know, spent $2.5. And, you know, pretty much everybody's got a cost overrun there. When you don't have a software system that's tracking your budgeted actuals, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's kind of where we're at. We did an enormous amount of work to finish the budget integration last cycle, to really prep a lot better for the second time this fine round with the, you know, not just trying to get a budget passed, but what's our target for inflation, where are we at? But we still have a lot of work to do on tax reconciliation and a lot of the guideposts here, grants management, capital expenditures tracking. We have a variety of areas in the project management team we're going for. As Ron mentioned, we've engaged Sue Lassard, probably one of the foremost experts in municipal budgeting here in Maine, the former Bucksport Town Manager, who's, I think Ron would probably agree, deliver, has delivered RHR audits for a decade that are a lot easier for RHR to get, process, test, move forward. And, and I do believe there's a very good light at the end of the tunnel. You know, probably many of you have probably seen the Washington County situation that's happening with, I think, an $11 million bond they're having to float to pay for past things. And I'm seeing some of the conversation there. That's kind of the way I felt, you know, a year and a half ago, coming in here. Now, thanks to Ron and, and Sue Lassard, but also to this team help, you know. Nate Burkhart, who just got that award, that he's, has expertise in municipal budgeting, software is in Trio. He is, you know, can build Excel sheets, he's super activated. When I hear Sue, you know, in the Finance Department and the culture there, you know, they, Sue McLean, our, our tax collector, and, you know, the whole group is really energized and enthused, so we have a, a fully reconciled account. One of the things you've probably noticed, to your point, Steve, on fiscal responsibility, is I've never come before the council to ask for something to be taken out of undesignated fund balance. I know this says $4 million from the end of FY24. Until we're fully reconciled to date, you know, we, we have the math that we're budgeted for and our various accounts that we can pull from in our reserves, but the city deserves to have those tools, like using their undesignated fund balance and knowing exactly what it was, and solving the depreciation, the wastewater aspects, so we can improve our bond rating. And I think we've got the right team and the right culture to, to get that over the line soon. And we're going to keep talking about it at Finance Committee meetings. We're going to probably bring Sue Lassard back here for an initial report on changes we need to make to policies and procedures, so that safeguards are in place. And we have a tech solution so that it's not so dependent on Tammy or Michelle being in charge of finances, so that the city succeeds going forward. So that's kind of the plan moving forward.
Councillor Halloran?
Ron, could you speak a little further about the wastewater treatment problem? I've been here four years, and I've heard you sound the alarm about the wastewater treatment problem. Could you speak a little more about that? At the Finance Committee, you mentioned that depreciation is a real cost, and that what I heard at the Finance Committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, that your plan's going to be wore out before you have replenishment funds and it being paid off.
Sure, so, so we actually look at two things. We, we look operationally at where, where basically your money is and where your equity is, and then we look from an infrastructure standpoint on, on where your equity, you know, is there. And in the case of the, of the wastewater department, with all the infrastructure upgrades that you guys have had over the past years, you know, it's heavily tilted towards infrastructure. And every year, you know, the city, you know, Nate, can you go down one more page, Nate? So we can kind of put this conversation into context. So, so right there, Nate, you can stop right there.
What page do you want?
So that number, the depreciation number, you know, that you talked about, that $811,000, that's the annual wear and tear, you know, on your infrastructure. And it has a direct correlation, you know, to our standards, saying you ought to have some kind of an attachment to that with a capital reserve account where your, where your budgeting, you know, for, you know, for this depreciation, this wear and tear, you know, on your, on your infrastructure. And, and, and that certainly, that number gets bigger and bigger every year, you know, with the, the projects. The city certainly hasn't set aside, you know, nearly enough money to fund that. And then hence the reason why you're in a operational deficit, you know, primarily because, you know, that, that, that number right there. A lot of people say, well, it's paper, it's not real. It's real, it's real. That, that, as soon as that pipe goes in the ground, it's like driving a new car off the parking lot, it loses value. And with all the money you put into infrastructure, that accumulation of all that wear and tear has really put you, you know, into a deficit situation in your wastewater department. And, and, and as we talked about at the Finance Committee, you know, meeting, it's like, there really needs to be a solid plan to, you know, address that going forward. There's a lot of money, you know, in our state, you know, that, with that Build Back America package that we're starting to see some of that funding getting released again, you know, down into the local governments, for infrastructure projects, for roads, for things like that. It's nice to have capital reserve money where you can go match a dollar for 10 cents on the dollar, you know. And that's really, you know, where we see this next three or four years going, you know, with, you know, with that money becoming available to local government, that the city holds out its hands for various infrastructure projects out there. And clearly wastewater would be one of those departments, you know, that, that is in desperate need of capital, operating capital, you know, to continue to move itself forward.
If you mind, if I ask, Ron, so with a wastewater treatment plant, there's a, there's a reserve that they've been putting $35,000 a year for at least 12 years that hasn't been touched. Is that included on there?
Yeah, no, that's in a separate fund, I believe, but, and again, our point just to that is $35,000 for that treatment reserve, which I know was a big upgrade investment for the city a while ago, isn't nearly enough, and that's why it's time to look at the math now.
But doesn't that go against the?
And make some adjustments.
But I know, I understand that's in another fund, but that's for, that's for exactly what you're talking about and should be included and against that depreciation. Because that's what that fund is for, specifically for that, and it comes out of the budget every year in order for it to be, to go against that depreciation. So I don't think that depreciation is actually $800,000. That was in a?
So our math is $800,000, and that $35,000. And, and, and again, I could be wrong here, you know, because we've had a lot of conversations about this. That $35,000, the intent was to fund future capital reserve and infrastructure at the wastewater department. And, and again, I could be wrong, but that's the way I always understood it.
It is, but that's what the?
If that's the case, that should be an independent number.
That goes against the depreciation, because that's exactly what it's for, is to.
Okay.
But, and that being said, so the water department doesn't have this issue because the city can, it pays for our, our emergency water system, and then that goes against that.
I can't see, Tammy, is that you talking, or is it Michelle?
It's Michelle, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you didn't know. It's Michelle. So.
Hey, Michelle.
Is there a way, so besides that money that the city puts aside out of their budget every year for that depreciation, we can't, other than taxpayer dollars that aren't part of that system, there's no way that the city can put money into that, into that fund? So, enterprise fund. So what would be the suggestion, because the, the wastewater treatment plant was a $23 million plant. It was made much larger than it needed to be because we're, we're not a combined sewer system, we're a sanitary sewer system. So they, and so a lot of stormwater goes in there. So we knew that this was going to be an issue as, as, as it was being built, but we didn't have any, but we didn't have any ability to, to, to change that. Do you have, as, at, any suggestions in your, in your memo of how we can handle this?
I think, Michelle, time is going to be, time is going to be on your side here. And, and again, this was discussed and kind of vetted at the Finance Committee meeting too. Nate, can you scroll into the footnotes and get to the long-term debt section, specifically the utility district? You're going to start, Michelle, as I remember, some of this debt's going to start dropping off.
Yeah, it should be, yeah.
Yeah, I think about Ron at the Finance.
And so you think that that's more what it is?
That's going to help you, that's going to help mitigate that depreciation number exponentially, Michelle, for sure.
Okay.
And I think, Ron, you, you mentioned at the last meeting.
And I think that there were two or three loans, Nate, as I recall, that were going to drop off in three years, maybe four. One in three, maybe one or two in four.
And Ron mentioned that.
Nate, you want to go to like, Nate, note, note six or seven, Nate?
Ron, you mentioned at the last meeting, at the Finance Committee meeting too, that this depreciation number had decreased from last year's number to this year's.
Yeah, and that'll help too, you know, when that, that number goes down, debt principal goes down, you all, you know, that, that has a direct correlation to that $2.5 million. That number starts going up. And you can look right here at the business type activity funds, you know. And as I recall, one of those years in '28, '29, Michelle, I think that some of this debt's going to get retired, as I remember. That's going to help your financial condition a lot, you know. And as, as Charlie just stated, you know, with all this, you're getting, you're, you're paying a pretty hefty, you know, cost upfront for depreciation as that number starts changing, you know, down the road, you know. That, that, all those things have a direct correlation, you know, with, with that, with that equity, you know, especially with it being a, a deficit. And one of the things that we talked at that Finance Committee meeting is really, and I, I don't think that there's something solid out there that exists, Michelle, and that's why I was saying, you know, about that reserve account. That was always been my understanding, is that it was kind of the intent to go to like a three, five-year, 10-year, you know, plan as some of this debt starts expiring, some of this depreciation number starts getting reduced, and really see what that, what that looks like, so you can start planning and budgeting accordingly, you know, for, for what future upgrades may look like at the city, you know. Because like I say, that, 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 that's a real number, and I would just want to look into the crystal ball on what that is, because that has a direct impact on that deficit.
And I.
Thanks, Ron.
And just because whenever I see Michelle and Steve aligning on the same topic and interest, I think, you know, it's pretty clear to me that we probably need another, maybe we, Nate and Ashley could put this as, you know, once a month in our Finance Committee meeting. Let's get, I'm always a big fan of government, start putting a standing meeting on it, start getting until you get the information and the plan forward you need. So we'll look at the depreciation, we'll look at the debt retirement, we'll look at those reserve accounts. We'll also look at some of the service usage stuff, Steve, that you've talked about, and kind of what we're charging for things.
I'd like to interject that. I'd like to interject that we take a lot of other towns sewer by truck. And I've never been a fan of that. And this is a great opportunity. This is four years in a row that we've heard this. And this is another time to say it's not fair for us to be taking other towns sewer. And if we've got a deficit like we have here, we need to start charging everybody the same. No special deals that go on when you dump your truck sewer in our town. And you need to charge enough to benefit the people using the sewer department. Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth should be benefiting dearly if you're going to take other towns sewer. The other towns should be paying their share. And Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth is hooked up to sewer should be getting the benefit of that.
And I believe Woodard and Curran has done an analysis of this rate structure before and has noted that Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth are getting a good amount. And, but we can review that and see how it relates to, I think this is-
But you have an accountant telling you you have problems.
But based on-
We don't have a problem. Can I just, it's my last meeting, so I want to-
Go for it, Michelle.
We do not have a problem on that sewer system. And if we didn't take that for Mr., Mrs., Ms., whatever you want to call Ellsworth, but you know what? I pay taxes in Ellsworth and the people that are dumping that septic system into that septicage is me. This is the thing. I have a person from Lemoine come and suck out my septic system and then take it to that wastewater treatment plant. It's not just, it's all the people that live outside of the sewer system that have this issue and having that dump there. So it's not just that. And I don't think that Haslam Septic can say, well, this is Ellsworth people's septic, so charge me a different. I don't want mine going up. I pay taxes to help all of this. But the other thing is, is that sewer system is not losing money. And if you don't take that septage in, you're going to lose even more money. And we've proven that to you, Steve.
You haven't proven it to me. You've got an accountant telling you one thing and again, you're battling another.
An accountant is not telling us that we're losing money. It's because it's depreciation. It's because the amount of money that we're putting aside for that for later and the needs of that sewer treatment plant are not included in that fund. It's accounting. It's not a problem.
It's an equity issue and it's disproportionate equity between infrastructure and operations.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And until like that depreciation number goes down and some of your debt falls off, it's going to continue, you know, to be that way, which is why. And Michelle, there's a schedule out there that I want to go back and I'll put in all your guys' hands, you know, that I spent some with. But, you know, like I say, I'm pretty sure it starts, that somewhere in 2027, '28, you all, that equity ratio starts shifting towards a favorable operations, as I recall.
Absolutely.
Ron, did you get the condition assessment we had done?
So I'm not sure that I did. And that came up at the Finance Committee meeting and I just haven't had a chance to, you know, to look at it.
Because you wanted me last year to do the condition assessment. You said, you told me it would help us a great deal with the depreciation numbers if we had Woodard and Curran come in and do a condition assessment on the treatment plant.
And that's, did I hear that that's been done?
Yeah, it's done. I had Nate send it to me.
Yeah, we'll look and do it. This is for FY24, but yeah.
Several months ago.
Yeah. Yeah. But as far as that conditional assessment, you know, goes, I'm more than happy to, you know, to look at it. I'm going to assume when you say conditional assessment, that's on the infrastructure of your wastewater, you know, and maybe your water utility. I don't know. All that Woodard and Curran did, which is exactly what I'm saying. That'll have a direct proportionate down the road, you know, on that. And again, as debt falls off and, you know, and that, your equity ratios are going to, they're going to, they're going to switch. They're going to, they're going to switch favorably. And that's where I say, take that conditional assessment, come up with a plan. I haven't been asked to help out with that plan. I'm more than happy to help out with that plan, you know. And whatever that may look at, you know, again, I extend my hand to the city.
I'm happy to bring it back. You know, we'll get to the bottom of this. It seems like the depreciation is more due to debt retirement, some of the scheduled depreciation. We'll get this condition assessment up. They've already looked into the charging for sludge and that's bringing in a substantial amount. I'm sure we want to keep bringing it in.
And just so we're clear, you know, the direct correlation that for the non-numbers person, non-accountants, I've heard that word used a few times, that principal payment is directly attached to depreciation. Utility and wastewater departments, you won't find principal expenses on the utility district, you know. You find depreciation. And the theory behind that is that depreciation usually is similar to the annual depreciation cost. When those types of things change, the equity balance, you know, changes. But right now, that equity balance isn't proportionate right now. It's all tied up in infrastructure.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks for explaining.
Thank you much.
Any other councillors have questions for Ron relating to the audit? See, Ron and your team, thank you very much for all your hard work. Likewise to our Finance team. We appreciate it. And we look forward to striving for a better audit next year with your help. Thank you.
We all do. And thanks to everybody, you know, to, you know, to their, you know, certainly for all their assistance into this endeavor. It was a team effort for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Everybody take care. Have a good evening.
You as well, Ron. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, number 14, Council Order Number 092503, Discussion and Potential Action on the Moore Center Lease Extension.
And Rod-
We got Roddy Orlenbach, our Parks and Recreation Director. Facilities, Parks and Recreation Director.
The surprise at the end. So I'm here tonight to update you all on the progress with the Moore Center lease. As you know, Down East Family YMCA approached the council at the last meeting asking for some more immediate action on the current state of the lease there. I kind of feel like I'm telling you stuff that you're all very aware of. Their lease expired last year and they've been operating under a 13-month-long lease extension. They estimated that they were losing about $146,000 annually, which is the cost for them to operate the building as far as utilities go, what we broadly refer to as occupancy costs. I've been collaborating with Down East Family YMCA, Friends in Action, Elsworth Community Music Institute, and peripherally in the very, very short term with Elsworth School District, as there are now tenants in the building as well, to try to work towards a new metric or algorithm on how we figure out how to fairly inequitably distribute cost of the operation of the building. That process is moving along well, but still needs some time to get hammered out. At this point, the YMCA has asked us to consider a short-term, what they're referring to as a gap lease, where everything would kind of stay status quo for right now. All the operations would continue to be delivered as they are. The only change would be that the city would assume all cost of occupancy. 12-month average would be $7,500 a month. However, we're not quite into heating season, so I would, I would think that cost would be a little bit less for the next couple of months. My hope is that within 90 days, we'll have something more permanent ironed out and be able to move forward to the permanent lease. This recommendation is interim, the gap lease, which I believe was attached to the memo, should be in your packet. If you note, it's asking for that to be effective immediately, retroactive to September 1st, so the city would be paying utilities for the month of September, once they come out. And this is renegotiable every 30 days. So it doesn't create any long-term commitment on the part of the city, but gives us an opportunity to demonstrate good faith to the YMCA that we are hearing, you know, their, I don't want to sound dramatic, their plea for help, because it sounds like they're having a rough time. But yeah, so my recommendation would be that we move forward with a gap lease agreement with the YMCA until we can find a more permanent solution.
Yes, I should note, it's a port of this gap lease, you know. And Roddy has been doing an incredible job of getting this to finish. He's also working with a private sector partner here in local that has a lot of experience in managing private sector lease agreements that we're moving towards. And, you know, we've, the Y has been very patient with us for a long time. And, you know, the kind of benefit to the city of, you know, not getting here is, you know, it's cost for the Y. The school system is currently operating a pre-K program out there and they're not paying the Y, but the Y is covering their bills for being there. So in the near term, I think this kind of lights a fire for us to get, it's a short-term 30-day, so we can, you know, once Roddy and our teams have settled on the new fee structure and the CAMs, Common Area Management, the new structures, we also have some ideas on bringing in new tenants. And we also have the IRKI issue, which I know we're talking about it, the money being spent on that building. One of our citizens mentioned, maybe there's some cost synergies there. But in the near term, I think this is a good faith effort by the city to help share some of these costs and still keeps the YMCA providing tons of childcare, which is absolutely important in the city of Ellsworth. And then obviously the Friends in Action, our senior group, and the other group as well.
Any councillor questions for Roddy or Charlie or general thoughts? Councillor Smith?
Just clarification of one point you made. You said the school has the pre-K program there, but is not paying anything for that?
To acknowledge, yes.
As we move forward with this, maybe getting a sense of what the value is of that. And since like in a day and a half, we're going to start budgeting for the next fiscal year, make sure that that's being, that's part of the conversation for the school budget. But I want to understand how that, that is a city expense in a way.
Yeah, and we've talked about that. Roddy will have it kind of all broken down on square footage. And then, you know, and then common area management fees for each piece. We've talked also about like each organization, if they like to clean their own space, they can. If not, in addition to the common area management, cleaning spaces, you know, the city would be charging for cleaning those spaces. To your point, Nancy, you know, that will need to be accounted for in the school's costs for next year. Not just, you know, that, yeah, again, it's going to be the city taking that cost, although it's the school who's occupying the building. But we'll need to figure that out for next year. And also part of the IRKI conversation as well on how much we're spending on that building, what's the highest value, you know, for our buildings and maintenance and where we're at as a community. I know we've talked about that as a group to move forward on, you know, we've got to take these costs into account.
Thank you.
Ron, have you figured out how many square feet the YMCA is utilizing of that space? Just theirs plus what they use for other?
I don't have the exact square footage. I can tell you the building's 28,302 square feet and they, they're occupying 37% of the footprint.
So it's 28,000 what?
302.
And they're doing, I'm sorry, and they're doing how many?
37%.
So they have about 10,470?
It's, so it's not that easy, I'm sorry. But the overall square footage of the building is 28,302 square feet. The atrium, the gymnasium, the auditorium, and the conference room, none of the hallways, none of the stairwells, the elevator, the mechanical rooms, the bathrooms, none of that is included in their total square footage. That's all considered common area.
Right. So, but the building's 28,000, they use specifically for themselves?
Of the portion that's allocated, which is less than that, because we have to remove hallways, staircases, elevator, mechanical room, the rooms that are up for short-term or one-off rentals, those are not, we have to break those out from that 28,302 square feet before we can assign them what their percentage is.
Okay. So when you say 37%, you're just saying that-
Of the allocated spaces, they're using 37%.
Okay.
So the allocated spaces would be their classrooms, the individual rooms that they're using. So they have, like when you walk in at the atrium and you go left, they have all the rooms on the right-hand side of that hallway, the first one on the left, the last one on the left. They have the office, the kitchen, the cafeteria, and the after-school room downstairs.
Because I'm just wondering, I mean, that's $7,500.
If I, I don't want to throw a number out there, but I believe it's roughly around 8,000 square feet is what they're using.
Okay. So like, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if they have 8,000 square feet and the going rate, I don't know what the going rate is right now for commercial space, but say $15, which has got to be cheap. I just, that's $120,000 a year is about what they would be paying for rent for that space that's specifically theirs. I'm just wondering, a year, I mean, so it's about $10,000 a month. So custodial staffing and front desk staffing, because I don't know what facilities management oversight is, but I just wonder if that's paying-
If we were to clean their spaces, not the common area spaces, under the spreadsheet that I worked up, and I apologize for not bringing that with me tonight.
No, that's okay.
We would be like, their cost for a custodial and just their rooms, not the bathrooms, hallways, or anything like that, if you break it down to 10 cents a square foot charged for twice a week cleaning, they'd be paying like $45,000 in custodial a year.
And there's also the action of Friends in Action who'd be there. If we, if we really wanted to true cost, like to where, that's exactly where we're going with this piece. Friends in Action, we'd be paying more, others would be paying more. Like that's, this is all a good deal for Friends in Action, the Music Institute. The school is not paying anything right now. But all those costs are continuing to be borne in the YMCA. So this allows us to kind of move faster and, you know, for the city to kind of-
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do in my mind to accommodate, like, I think we're all in agreement that the services that are being offered out of that building are far more important to the community than a retail space. I want to, my effort is to get away from just assigning a baseline value to a building based on square foot and look at truly what is it costing us to operate the building. That way we're transparent, we're saying this is what it costs for the city to maintain this building. And the intent is to distribute that cost equitably across all of the tenants so that what they are paying reflects the portion of the building that they're using. And that we just break even with, it's not costing the city anything to maintain the building other than the debt service from the rehab done years and years and years ago.
And we're going to be getting lightning fast to get there. We don't anticipate holding 12 months because there's a cost for the city if we don't get them the new rates, the new, so this keeps the kids there, this keeps everybody kind of at a status quo, but the YMCA isn't holding the cost increase that could be borne by Friends in Action, could be borne by the city, could be borne by others, but it hasn't over the last 10 years. And even more so over the last four or five is costs, inflationary costs, especially in utilities have gone up. So, you know, we hope to be there within 90 days. Hopefully even sooner than that. I know we're pretty, we're pretty close on a lot of these things, right? I have a ton of meetings. This is just a 30-day lease going forward so that the Y knows that we're taking it seriously. And, you know, it's not just them that has to bear the cost of the school coming in there or inflation increases or energy price increases.
And I will say, like, one of the big opportunities for success moving forward is finding a more consistent and successful use of those indoor spaces that sit vacant, the gymnasium, the auditorium, the conference room. We actually had a meeting on a totally different subject with some members from Rotary and they're going to start moving their monthly meetings to the Moore Center to help paying and filling those empty spaces. So I think, I think as a community, to demonstrate the importance of the facility and to support its longevity, we get word out to these civic organizations that need a meeting space, that might just be meeting wherever, and encourage them to come to the Moore Center, pay to rent a room and help sustain what's being offered at the Moore Center.
Any other questions, councillors?
As a matter of course, this first month, do we know what fund this is going to come from? Should we be thinking of it as recreation budget?
Facilities, maintenance, line.
Councillor White, you have a question?
I was going to ask the same thing.
I'll get you the number for it if you want. Great minds think alike.
Yeah. And yeah, just because, as I am new to this, if we, worst-case scenario, we don't come out with a good solution and we're paying this utility bill of $7,500, like can we fund this? How long can we fund this? What do we take it away from?
We also have facilities reserves and also I think we might need to consider IRKI as well. And as one of the things that Jared talked about, we're spending a fair amount of money on that building as well. And maybe we need to consolidate resources and over the year that we're considering, you know, not just taking care of two assets that are bleeding money, but folding to one asset. And we could apply some of the funding potentially, you know, crosswise to there. Because, you know, to your point, Tabitha, you see in this audit a bunch of overspends by a million bucks on a variety of things. And, you know, we're tracking it. We can't do that again. And, you know, I wish we had the tool of saying, we can take it out of undesignated fund balance. And this is what you're undesignated, but we don't have that tool yet. I'm not going to use that tool until it's there. But we do have reserve accounts. we do have reserve accounts for facilities, we do have our facilities maintenance accounts, and, you know, lights a fire under us to move quickly on this, and then maybe consider some of our facilities assets to save some funds. We also have our, our new janitorial services person who's here, we have new facilities managers coming in, you know, we don't have some other assets, maybe they can take care of the cleaning here, and, you know, we can get a cost savings and we can charge it back to the other groups. Maybe we can think creatively with the school on operational maintenance of the area, as Roddy mentioned too, you know, there's a great indoor place, maybe we can maximize that for pickleball and charge some more costs, maybe there is a bunch of auxiliary spaces we could charge for, so some of that's going to be ironed out for Roddy, but we want to make sure that, that facility is as cost neutral to the city as possible.
Councillor, councillor moat?
Is this going to be coming back to council every single month? One, I actually think that it should, because it's, we've been talking about this lease for quite some time, and if it makes sure that it's in the front, that we're going to...
It will, it's also been at the last two budget, or the last two city council workshops, so in addition to the council meetings, but we can definitely bring it back to council in the next...
My sincere hope is the next time it comes before the city council, you're voting on approving a new permanent lease agreement.
But the very least an update, we can, you know, if we don't have it inked by October, at least you'll get an update on where we're at in the inking, and there'll also be the opportunity on October 6th, it's kind of a standing workshop item for us to...
I'm inclined to say, that's what I was going to say, but no. I want to understand, if we're so close, why we're doing a short-term lease. My understanding is the Y loses money in their management of this building every month, they are not in a position to continue this, and perhaps there's a little frustration that we're still here. And so, our goal with the short-term lease is that the city is going to take on that short-term budget shortfall, which we don't want to do either, but we are stepping up and filling that gap, and it also is going to serve as a $7,500 a month incentive for us to close the deal and have a long-term lease in place. Is that the goal of a short-term lease?
That's absolutely the goal, because we can go and start having meetings tomorrow, but if just one, so the thing to keep in mind is right now, the lease agreement is with the YMCA and only the YMCA. Once we start moving to this permanent structure, what we hope will be a permanent structure, we're going to be bringing in Friends in Action, we're going to be bringing in Ellsworth Community Music Institute, we're hopefully going to be bringing in the school district. Now we have four people that we have to make agreements with. So managing something in the short-term with only one tenant, I think is, is simpler, and I have a whole lot more faith in that we're going to be able to do this, it's just two parties involved. I would like to think that everybody's going to be amenable to the, the structure of the new lease we'd like to roll out, but I don't want to bank on that and have the YMCA continue to absorb these costs.
And it is my understanding from these earlier meetings, that the Y sort of took this on, I don't want to say as a favor to the city, but it was a gap in capacity that we couldn't fill, and so they stepped in, and they're asking to be able to step out.
And I would like to remind you, when, when they signed the original lease, it was 11 years ago, and in that time, minimum wage has doubled in the state of Maine, the cost of electricity has doubled in the state of Maine, the city of Ellsworth and every other community in the area has started free pre-K programs, which is the largest revenue generator for any childcare system. So we've doubled their cost on every front and taken away their ability to offset that cost by the most profitable demographic in the childcare environment.
That's important, thank you, appreciate that. Isn't that what you were going to say?
Councillor Howland?
I may need some help with the numbers, but when I sat and listened to the Y, they said that, if I remember correctly, that they had a $150,000 a year deficit. $7,500 a month is only $90,000 a year. When I sat in front of them, they mentioned that they were looking for the city to fill that gap. So I believe in my heart you're talking about $150,000 bucks, not $90,000. And I want to remind everybody that the city renovated that building, and the payment that the city is paying every single month is $27,000 a month. Now, I'm using round numbers, I believe this year it's actually 26 and change, but it's been up as high as 29, it's a sliding scale. The city gives the Y 70 grand a year, is that fair? Is that what we gave them this year?
Recreation commission, yes.
Okay, the city gives the Y 70 grand a year, they're paying $27,000 a month on the building, they were given it for a dollar a year for 10 years, they haven't found a way to make that work with a free building. That's not our problem, that's their problem. They're making their problem our problem. We set this up, and I'm all for the Y, okay, I'm not against the Y, I'm not against any of the programs, I think they're wonderful programs, but if you're going to give a payment of $27,000 a month, and now you want to give them another 7,500 a month, which is really 150 grand a year, not 90, from what they told us, and you're giving them a $70,000 stipend every year, there's got to be a stop to this someplace. There's a lot of people that would like to get a free building for a dollar a year. If they can't make it with a free building on a dollar a year, that's not our problem.
I think it is our problem, the, you know, the Moore Center houses very valuable organizations that serve our community, serve our families, and we're, I don't think the city of Ellsworth is out to make money off them, I think it's, as a council and as a community, we've decided to invest funds into that building to support these organizations. I for one have benefited greatly from the YMCA's services for my family, I know many others have, I've benefited from Friends in Action for my father, I've benefited from the Ellsworth Community Music Institute, and now we're all benefiting from the pre-K that's occupying that building. So I understand, it may not make, be a money-making venture, but I think it's a community-building venture, and I'm quite willing to invest in it, I'm quite willing to invest in the short-term payment of our utilities for the building while we work out a long-term deal that's best for the community, best for these organizations, and makes Ellsworth better. So, does the council, does anyone want to move for a motion regarding this matter?
Yeah. I move that the city enter into a short-term lease agreement with Down East Family YMCA effective immediately, with the lease to be renewable every 30 days, until such times a long-term lease can be drafted, negotiated, and executed. Under the terms of the short-term agreement, the city shall assume responsibility for the costs and utilities, cost of utilities associated with the lease premises.
Second with a friendly amendment, I think I heard for it to be retroactive to September 1st.
That's right.
If you accept that amendment?
Accepted.
Only because it was friendly.
Very friendly.
Any further discussion on the motion from council?
Yes.
Well, it's just, you, you said this more or less, but it's such an important distinction
to keep in mind for this, but for so much what we talk about, the distinction between a business and a nonprofit or service provider or municipality. It's a very important distinction, because just like Norton Park doesn't make us money, we do it for other reasons, just like the Y is, you know, they're offering their services and their space, these are essential services in an essential space, and it's our duty, I believe, as a, as a city to upkeep that, because we may not see immediately the benefits of that, financially or otherwise, but they exist, a lot of people feel them in their families, and I would argue also that there are financial benefits that come when people can drop their kids off to daycare and then continue working downtown, take advantage of those services, it all comes back around and strengthens our community.
Agreed.
And I just want to, I'm really, I'm really excited that you're doing this and you're doing it this way, because I think, because of the agreement that was made with the Y, it's become the YMCA's building, and it has not, and so it's a misnomer, and it means to be, it's the Ellsworth Community Building, and it's just like you said, there are a lot of organizations that use that, the Rotary Club has their pancake breakfast, it is not the YMCA daycare building that they're using for free, it's the city of Ellsworth Community Building that a lot of organizations are using, and once that's taken away, and everyone's just paying their fair share, I think that this whole discussion will go away, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Roddy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roddy.
Council matter number 15, or agenda matter 15, council order number 092504, discussion of potential action on the request of the IT Systems Administrator to award a contract for streetlight acquisition LED conversion services. Wizard of Oz is a ride.
Good evening, council, Jason Ingalls, IT Systems Administrator. So as we discussed at the workshop earlier this month, I'm here tonight asking you to award a contract to RTE Energy Solutions to take us through the process of purchasing our streetlights from Versant and converting them to LED. And just so you're aware, Mark Carter is here from RTE, if there's any questions for him to hit this, through this process. We did issue an RFP for this in August, we received two proposals back, the staff group scored the proposals, and we did prefer the proposal from RTE. Primary benefits with RTE is it's always the lower cost, they have a lot more local main experience with Versant and Amera, and they have a local person here in the state. We thought those were important factors as we go through this. So to get right to the point of why this is such a big deal, it's a, it's a large financial savings. We're currently spending about $135,000 per year on street lighting, and if we do this project, even with the debt service required to do the project, we would be saving about $43,000 the first year. So the project has a, a simple payback of about three, three to four years, and a cash flow payback of around seven years. Additionally, it gives us the ability to choose our own lights, we can pick the, you know, the color tempers we like, the brightness. We will own them, and the reason we save, the significant savings is because, once we own them, we're responsible for the maintenance, and we're not paying the maintenance charges passed through by Versant. At the workshop, the question was asked about insurance, we can insure the lights for $300 a year total for the whole lineup, so, okay.
You can find that in the box over there.
We, we also are required to have liability insurance by Versant, and that's $600 a year, so it's, even with that, we're still significant savings. It is a $400,000 project, proposing we do a lease for that, municipal lease, it's a seven-year lease with the, and at the end, it's a $1 buyout, so at the end, we $1, we'll own all the lights. And it's a true municipal lease with a, with a non-appropriation clause, so we will have the opportunity every year to appropriate funds to that lease, so it's not contributing to the city's debt load because of the way that is structured. The downside of that is there aren't a lot of banks that do that type of lease, and I only have, I was able to receive two proposals for the lease. One was from Main Community Bank, which used to be Gorham Savings, which is the lease that I recommended you approve in this, however, since your packets came out, I did receive a new lease proposal from municipal leasing consultants, which has a better rate, same terms as the late, the lease from Main Community Bank, however, it's a lower interest rate. And we would save about $3,000 in finance charges over the course of the lease, so it's not huge, but it's something, so. It looks like my shallow questions.
I do. So it's appropriated annually?
Yes, it has a, it has a non-appropriation clause in the lease.
What happens if we don't do it one year?
I'm pretty sure the bank would take ownership of the lights. You probably wouldn't want to do that, but...
Oh no, I'm just, because I'm trying to figure out the legality of this, but does the interest rate change every year when you appropriate?
No, it's, the lease is for the seven-year term.
And where are we funding this out of?
It's cash flow, street, streetlights, so it's, it'll, we'll pay less doing this if we do these now than we would have if we stayed with the licenses we have them now. So we can pay the lease payment with our existing streetlight funds.
It's going to happen that quickly that you can...
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be, the, the project timeline in here is done by us.
That's the, yeah, it's cash flow positive out of that same account.
Yeah, we're saving $42,000 year one, so, over what we're currently paying.
So we can pay Versant for all these streetlights for X this year, or we go into this lease agreement and pay less on the lease starting in this year, and that is, we're not technically obligating over the time we go up every year.
Yeah, see how they word it in the lease document. Lease will contain a non-appropriation clause, I think the one from the new bank was...
I didn't see that in there, but...
And we also have the consultant too.
And so what it's saying is, is we're not obligating the council to future years?
Correct. Says, the other one words it differently, it says, this, the lease payments shall be subject to annual appropriation for each fiscal year. So they recognize that future councils could, in theory, not appropriate those to this lease.
And it doesn't hurt our debts, sort of, you know, our total amount of debt in the city via the municipal lease as opposed to bonding for it.
The downside is, like I said, none of the local banks do this, it's a pretty niche product from what I've found, so...
I never heard of it before, it's...
I, I did the servers this way, and I think the school does a lot of their buses this way too, so...
I don't know if we want to hear from the consultant, they're, they're here too, about, I know they have experience with other cities and towns.
Do you have any experience with the, with the leasing, or any other experience with the, this project?
Yeah, I mean, we...
Can you come to the...
Yeah, sure.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Mark Carter from Powell, Maine with RTE Energy. So our company's done about 350 municipal LED streetlight upgrades, and 49 in the state of Maine alone. So we've had a number of different customers use this company, it's municipal leasing consultants out of Vermont, and they specialize in TELP or TELF leasing, so tax-exempt lease financing or purchasing through this means. So as you talked about, it really doesn't show up as debt, because this is a non-metered asset, so they're guaranteed savings. So your savings are greater than your, your debt payment, so it shouldn't go against your borrowing cost for, for the city. So if you'd like any references, we don't make any money off this, off the, off the financing, it's just that it helps facilitate projects for us in this state and others. So if you'd like to talk to some other finance officers from other cities, I think the city of Bath most recently used them, but I can probably get you a list of at least eight or 10 in the state of Maine that's used MLC. And I do believe they said, this company specifically has done two projects with the Ellsworth School District, so they are utilizing this particular company for, for financing as well.
So they did the TELP for this?
Yeah, yeah.
And what was the name of the organization again, the company?
MLC, Municipal Leasing Consultants.
Great, thank you.
That bid response came in late, was it still within the...
No, there was, so we, we didn't bid the leasing, I just requested proposals, so we didn't bid out the leasing, so, that's what I was like, it wasn't really late, it was on deadline.
Great. Any other questions from council?
What, what's...
He raised his hand first, he was, he's a gentleman. Councillor Smith, please.
Clarification on the two projects, I'm in the Ellsworth school system that used this financing mechanism. Did I understand?
The tax-exempt lease program is like their energy efficiency upgrades at the school, so I think they essentially, you know, it's a pretty massive energy efficiency upgrade, but you basically realize all the savings upfront as opposed to...
A lot of efficiency main projects go through this type of...
Okay, I remember that now, thank you.
Remember, it's very TELF.
I just have one other question. Who does the maintenance on these, Jason, when...
We will, well, the city will, we'll likely hire a contractor to do the maintenance. They come with a 10-year warranty, so, for parks, so we'll have to pay labor, you know, after the first year for replacements and whatnot, but it, it's factored in, the estimated, the estimated annual maintenance is factored into these numbers.
I should also note...
I should also note, one of these, it's a quality of life upgrade, I think, in a lot of ways, too. I've been doing some lunches with our fire department recently, and they see things in the middle of the night that I don't see, obviously. And they're around all Ellsworth in the middle of the night. And one of them, the fire department people is awesome. And he's been trying to get Versant to replace all these lights because they're out all over Ellsworth. And we, and, but then I told that to Jason, and Jason was like, don't, tell them to stop. Every time they replace it, it's going to cost us like $300 to buy it back. So we need to replace these lights. You know, it's quality of life in the city. These are your, like, pole lights, not your streetlights that are down here on High Street. It's the VPI of the thriving communities. That could help with those, like, more decorative type lights. This is, you know, on the poles, those types of lights. A lot of them are out right now. We don't want to have to pay a premium market to Versant to, you know, get an inferior potentially product. You know, as we mentioned with Nate and our IT team, they do lights. They, you know, this is another example of leadership of saving the city money, best in class, getting better lighting, and a class savings. Thank you very much to Nate and the team for doing this. Or Jason, sorry.
Let's mention an energy savings, right? And these will be dark sky compliance?
Dark sky. And significant energy savings. I have the number somewhere there, but it's.
Like you turned them into, like, disco lights, do you say?
I don't know if we could do that.
Sad.
Still pretty good.
It's slightly more money for that, but generally, the energy reduction is about 70%. Your reduction in cost from Versant would be about 80% because of the maintenance savings that's included in that. So that's why it goes from $135,000 down to about $26,000 from, and that includes the maintenance cost included in that.
Great, thank you.
So what is maintenance? Is that changing a light bulb?
Changing the lights, yeah. Or if storm damage could be something like that.
Yeah, just give some reference. The current high-intensity discharge bulbs that you have now, right, your standard high-peroxide ones that you have on your streetlights, they have a lifespan of about four years. So if you've got 500 lights, you should expect statistically to see 125 fail or 10 a month to go out. LEDs typically have one-half of 1% failure rate. So if you look at that, you're probably going to lose a couple a year at most, though you may see a few more go out because it's part of the legislation that was written for the buyback that was spearheaded about 10 years ago by Nathan Poor and the Town of Falmouth and all that, when they went through the initial, there is a requirement to put a 10-amp fuse in line with the streetlight. So from the wiring from the grid, that acts as a point of demarcation between your assets and the utilities' assets. So you'll own the fixture, you'll own the mast arm, the metal arm that goes and mounts to the pole, and you'll own the wire from the fixture to that fuse. And then from the fuse up would actually be the utilities back up into the secondary. So you'll own those assets. And above and beyond, you're going to get better lighting. It's going to be more uniform. It's going to be much more friendly lighting. But also, you own those assets. So there are other towns that are utilizing streetlights that have streetlight-powered cameras. If they want to have that from the police department or people counting, car counting from a public works department, some of the towns have signed to put 5G radios on there for cell phone densification. So there's other uses that the town or the city couldn't actually monetize in the future by owning those assets as opposed to allowing the utility to own those assets.
Interesting.
So my question about the maintenance is this. The city bought a bucket truck a while ago. Is that not something that could be used for this? Or is there licensing to change a light bulb?
You have to be on Versant's approved list to work on these, and we would not qualify for that.
Yeah. And we do offer those services.
Excuse me. Versant has to approve who can work on them?
Yeah. That would be a licensed electrician at a minimum.
Okay.
You're in the power zone. So you're in Versant's power zone. Once you get to there, so companies like On Target or RL Todd or a number of others, but they, all the utilities have a published list of, and they're the same ones that do storm restoration work and such and subcontracting for the utilities. But to get into the power zone, which is different than the, the communication zone, right? So the, the Spectrums of the World and the DSL companies, that's, that's a, you know, smaller truck and a lower thing. But once you get up into the primary, you have to be certified by the utility.
Really?
Yeah. So.
We have a question from the public.
Patrick, Shai, 42 School Street. So Versant owns the poles, and there's some poles that are owned by Consolidated. So that's why they only want certain, certain entities to be able to access those poles. Because they, like, Versant leases out sections of their poles to all the other utilities, like your Consolidated, Spectrum, Phidium, you can go on and on and on. So my question, we, are we going to lease space off of Versant or Consolidated poles?
You don't have to.
Okay.
You're allowed to do it.
And Jason, that's what the legislation kind of made this.
You're grandfathering the location of all the existing poles, but you also have the ability to request a petition for new poles. So, or excuse me, new lights on existing poles. So we've run into situations where the towns, I believe in Falmouth, they wanted three poles where they had dry fire hydrants, right? So they wanted to protect their fire crews when they're filling up their pump tanks. So, and we've had other cities that say, well, you know, we've had a lot of crashes in this area. We'd like to see an extra light. The only difference in the process is you do have to request, we want to add a light to this particular pole, and they'll send an engineer to make sure that the pole is structurally sound to take that. So that's the only added step. But all the existing, I believe you have exactly 500 lights that you're paying for from Versant Power. All of those would be grandfathered on the location of those lights on those poles.
Great. Well, how would the council like to proceed?
I would like to move to award the streetlight acquisition LED conversion project to RTE Energy Solutions. Authorize the city manager to execute all necessary agreements with Versant Power and RTE and enter into a municipal lease purchase with Municipal Leasing Consultants for the actual project amount, not to exceed $400,000, consistent with the final investment grade audit.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Can I ask? And Timmy, tell me if I'm wrong, but I, I think we need to put into this motion somewhere that it's an, it's an annual appropriation because the way that this is made, we're committing $400,000.
Maybe comma committed.
Annual appropriation out of the streetlight.
Yeah.
Out of the streetlight account or?
Purchased with an actual projected amount to be paid in, in annual appropriation through the budget process or something like, does that affect it? And I just think that that clarifies that so that.
And then future councils can overrule it if they would just.
Accepted.
Have we need to get that?
Email me and I'll send it to you.
All right. Okay, friendly amendment accepted. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Jason. Thanks for all the hard work. Thank you very much.
Great job on saving the city money.
Yeah, thank you. We're saving bucks.
Please timeout.
Putting dollars back in the box.
Timeout?
Yeah, timeout.
Thank you. Timeout. Need a five-minute recess?
Please.
It's in order.
I was like, ooh, I'm starting to squirm.
He's all right. I, I.
I know.
Okay, I believe we have all our councilors have been wrangled. And we'll bring the meeting back to order. I just want to note for those here tonight and listening at home, we are going to table two matters, so just 18 and 19. We'll get to it, but just wanted people to know as far as the timing and all that. So we're on to council order, agenda item 16, council order number 092505, discussion of internet, on internet connectivity in the Graham Lake area sponsored by Councillor Stein.
Thank you.
Councillor Stein, please.
Yeah, first I want to apologize if he's watching at home. I hope he's not, because he's probably got other things to do, but Mr. Nichol was here earlier and wanted to speak on this. He was actually one of the first folks who emailed me nearly a year ago now and since has kept up communication, as have several of his neighbors. So the purpose of this discussion is just to get it back on everybody's plates. It was unfortunate for about a year that it was taken up by a few different staffers in City Hall who were working on it, who were making some progress, a lot of frustrating dead ends, and then some of those staffers are no longer with us. So I just want to make sure that we're going to move this forward, and somebody besides myself is looking into this, because I don't know how to go from here. But basically, what happened was broadband committee in 2023 interviewed internet service providers to understand their plans for Ellsworth and determine a path forward. This was the broadband committee for potential grant funding to fill in the gaps. So this is internet connectivity in Ellsworth where none existed, if there were such areas. So it seemed that the majority of Ellsworth was indeed covered with existing service or fiber networks through various providers like Phidium, Spectrum, Rivenet, et cetera. So what we found was that Phidium basically covered all of the loose ends with fiber except for North Street and streets off of North Street like Graham Way and Branch Pond Road area. In the case of North Street, Spectrum and Rivenet only go so far as the intersection with Eagle Road between Eagle Road and City Line. There's essentially no reliable high-speed option in that area. So what I was hearing from folks was that people were home, trying to work from home and could not because they didn't have enough connectivity. Some children were trying to attend school remotely and could not as well for the same reasons. So, you know, this struck me as being something we needed to dig into, because in this day and age, it's a basic need to work and to get an education. So thanks to the IT department and to previous economic development officers here for getting this information. The frustrating bits, just to sum up a little bit, were that in an effort for Phidium to expand some of their, some of their networks, the city of Ellsworth confirmed that Graham Way and Branch Pond Road were initially planned by Phidium as a, on a build list, but then the project was dropped due to cost to Phidium. However, that initial map that had those areas on a build list was sustained and still exists and became the default map, showing that those areas were actually covered rather than just a build list. So it looks as though whatever map comes up on grant funding opportunities, and when we look into this area, that those areas in question are actually covered and have Phidium access, though they don't. And so this was discovered by our IT department and conversations with Phidium at the same time that folks that lived up in that area contacted Phidium themselves, got back to the city and said, this is what we've learned. They told us, sorry, we had it on a build list, but it's too expensive, and now we're over on MDI working on projects, and we won't come back to you. IT engaged with the main connectivity authority, the MCA, for interim programs, but they ran into the same or similar problems with the mapping, as did the initial BEED funding, that's the broadband equity access and deployment grants that were offered at the time. Let's see, moving down to October 2024, the inquiry was made to the MCA regarding working internet ASAP as a temporary option. The MCA said the BEED program remains the only viable funding. We haven't found any others that would work, but we need further engagement with the Union River connectivity there. And our contact there was Kendra Jo Grindel at Maine MCA, which I think.
Kendra Jo MCA.
Yeah, so we kept running into the same problems. Outreach in March 2025 was made again to MCA to follow up regarding BEED funding status. And the concern was that basically the deadline for any new BEED fundings was already passed, and we weren't able to make any additional progress on the mapping issue. So today, I've received another few emails from Mr. Nichol, as well as some neighbors, saying that this is still an issue, it's ongoing, nothing has changed. So I, again, I just wanted to bring this up. Also wanted to say, this exemplifies a little bit of sort of the opposite of what we were talking about with the more center discussion. It just, it is frustrating to all the people that are dealing with this, as it is to myself, hearing that, you know, for-profit company like Phidium, the limitations when we talk about businesses and for-profits is that if an area of coverage is not going to be profitable, they're not obligated to continue that coverage, whereas I believe it's, you know, the purview of this, of the city to make sure that those needs are met. So that's where I think we can fill the gaps, just not sure how. And I would love to hear thoughts or suggestions. Obviously, there's no motion for this item tonight, but I do want to make sure we're discussing this. Questions, thoughts?
Thank you, Councillor Stein. Councillor Smith?
I can just add, I saw this on the agenda this morning and emailed with Twyla, who looped in our planner, for more continued conversations on this. And I understand that John's called, what the noise was me forwarding the email thread to John, so he's got it as well. But I understand that with the turnover we've had here, it's hard to pick up on seemingly small projects like this. So being able to move forward and know what staffer we can connect once again with Kendra Jo Grindel, she's the, like, community planning officer, something like that, at MCA, to be able to move forward. And it's not unusual there. The way that coverage is reported is by census block, and if one building is covered in that census block, the whole block is marked as covered. And then let alone what some of the larger ISPs do in promoting the intention and not following through is, it's sadly not uncommon, I think, across the country. And we've dealt with it in Maine and different communities as well. So if we, again, with, with the new staffing that we've got onboard and coming up to speed, the BEED, what was interesting too, and in that email thread, there is mapping of the latest BEED awards, which are the final BEED awards. There's, that, that program isn't moving forward at the federal level. There is a polygon of Ellsworth that's in that, but I haven't had time to follow up to find out more about it. So there's more activity, and I think once we discern which staff person makes sense to be the lead on this, then we can have some consistency in follow-up. But the problems we've had with how the mapping and how obligations are followed through on happens are too often, unfortunately. So I look forward to being able to help the folks in Ellsworth who are dealing with this same problem.
Yeah, John, happy, I know you're concerned, leaving off the council, that this type of great work, I think this is one of your, your best aspects. I'll maybe fetch you out a little more at your last council meeting. But just, you know, no matter how small the project or what it is, you have great citizen responses. I've seen it via email and just how much you care about each of these citizens, you know, if there was a thousand people, if there's 15 that are looking for this. So let me, we'll add it to our project management team priority matrix list that keeps moving on. And it sounds like Councillor Smith can maybe take this torch for you from a council perspective too. To your point, councillor, there is a Union River Direct Communications for 145 locations at $1.3 million allocated here. There's 23,260 customers for, it looks like $109 million. Like, wow. There's an aspect, I think I mentioned you, Councillor Stein, where it's like, why don't we just get Starlink for all these people and pay for it for the next 300 years so it's free? That would be pretty fast internet, as opposed to trying to do all this infrastructure at enormous costs, like, there's part of me that wants to go to the next budget meeting if we're not solved and say, hey, council, how about we do, you know, $3,000 allocated for the last people to get them Starlink. But that's, so let's see if we can get it paid for through BEED or through another alternative source. But every citizen, we're so close to getting every citizen true fiber. It's, you know, something we need to do for all our citizens, so we'll keep moving forward.
If, just lastly, if anybody in those areas is watching, because I know they, they sometimes do, if you have any new information, send it our way. I know some of you are really diligent by, about calling these companies and talking with them on the phone, so if anything comes up, share it with us.
And what was the gentleman's name who was here before?
Scott Nichol.
Scott Nichol. Maybe, I mean, if we could just work with John, let's get a meeting with me and him put together, just so he has a direct contact.
Yeah, I'll circulate those emails again.
Great. John, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other councilors, any comments?
Just to add, trying to sort through the map, and again, it's going to take more time. It looks like the southern tip of Graham Lake, southern portion, is in this mapping, so we can continue to pick it up. I don't know if that's the only party in Ellsworth, or if that's the only part that was lacking, but I got pieces of the puzzle, but that's it at this point.
Yeah. I'm sure John will follow up and answer, yes.
He knows how to find me.
Yes, please, if you could state your name for the record.
Sure, thanks, sir. Cara Armando, heart of Ellsworth. I just want to also draw to the council's attention that the State Street block in downtown Ellsworth also does not have fiber. And that block was left off when the downtown was done however many years ago. That block is working on it, but perhaps there's some opportunity to sort of couple and make the trip for the large corporation. Makes sense financially, I don't know.
You would think there'd be enough density there to make that work.
Which section?
Yeah, the State Street block, the Peters block, as we call it locally. So that entire block was left out. However, it's my understanding that there is on Water Street, and then I know that the Ellsworth Public Library has it as well. So it's very strange that that was left off as well, so.
Okay, thank you for.
Thank you.
Raising that. Any other public comments on this issue? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number 17, council order number 092506, notification of the appointment of Danielle Giff as the incoming Director of Planning and Urban Development.
So, thanks you, thank you, Councillor Lyons. Really excited to bring Danielle on board to the team. You know, I should, you know, she's, brings an amazing skill set into our planning department, over 15 years of municipal and federal leadership in forest sustainability and community development, most recently as the Regional Program Manager for the USDA's Forest Service Urban and Community Forest Program in the Northeast. She's also led multiple large-scale, multi-stakeholder initiatives in the New York City Parks and Rec Department, and has, you know, including earning national recognition of the 2025 USDA Secretary Honor Award and the U.S. Forest Service Regional Foresters Honor Award. I'm looking forward to potentially giving up my status as the tree warden. I'll have to change my LinkedIn, but considering I have no qualification to be the Lorax of Ellsworth, it probably belongs in somebody's responsibility who knows something about these things. We, she just has incredible experience supervising planning, zoning, housing development initiatives, green infrastructure, transfer planning, and I think one of the most important things, aligning grants management to the city's strategic goals. It's an audit finding, we need to do better in grants management. You heard the auditor talk about it, how we do these larger capital projects, but then people leave. And I think, you know, a lot of this issues we're, we're dealing with in the city are relative, you know, it's probably 40, 50% of the organization turned over in the last couple of years. And the way the organization was structured was when those people left, the, the brains that they left too, that was it. You know, for a grant, for, you know, for an infrastructure project, for how it was running, there was no paperwork, there were no systems to track it, there were no Excel sheets running around on how to manage all the grants going to the cities, but people had put out a lot. And I think for me coming in, in addition to not having budgeted versus actual amounts, there was a little level coming in of like, where, you know, and, oh, wow, that's really interesting, we don't have a structure for that, we're going to need to build that, we're going to need to build that, we're going to need to build that. I think what makes good government municipal employees, what makes good entrepreneurs, is they see problems as opportunities. And, you know, now we can build a best-in-class grant management program with somebody like Danielle, who knows the top quality, because she's, manages all the grants that we want to get from the USDA, and knows the compliance initiatives. And we had, actually, myself, her, and Sarah had a very long conversation, which was really just about this piece, you know, we're going to be looking to the, you know, in planning, looking to the next five, six years. This Village Partnership Initiative, that could be $30 million in a massive generational transformation for downtown. Thriving communities could be, you know, an equal-type investment in the High Street corridor. We've got a 20-plus million dollar water treatment plant replacement, we're doing tons of infrastructure projects all the time, and we need to modernize the city on how we track and manage those processes. And I think more than anything, I'm looking forward to Danielle pulling that together, and then also looking towards the larger strategic initiatives of the city, the city council, as Sarah and I were talking about, we're so on the dance floor. And every fire at the moment, I think you as a council have probably seen that over the last 18 months, getting from just putting out fires, putting out fires, to like, hey, like, that's a big investment in the city, we need to do a ton of work, and it shouldn't just be so relative to a person. We need to build systems and structures. We've brought a lot of great people onboard the organization to do that. Danielle, I think, is going to be another great addition to the team. And then beyond all that too, with, I think, the earlier part, we've also got a lot of great people who have stayed and whose big brains, like Nate, like Jasons, are still with us and are doing amazing work. So it's really, it's really been great to bring in a lot of new people with new energy, new ideas, but also so thankful for all the amazing people we still have in the organization that are doing great work every day.
Great.
And that's it.
Danielle, would you like to say anything to the council?
Roddy told me I have to.
Can you, can you go to this, sorry? That's like my one job, you have to go over there.
And Roddy's done his job by telling her she has to. Teamwork.
Yes, just very quickly, I am so thrilled to be here with the city of Ellsworth. I love this place, I've been visiting for a very long time, and so I'm happy to be a resident and to help contribute to making the city even better than it is now. So thank you so much, and I'm really excited to get to work and start working with all of you. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Wonderful. Any questions, comments from the council?
Yay. You can, you can.
You didn't raise your hand.
I know.
For the, for the record, what is the beginning salary?
$90,000, and I should also note that this is, well, it's the Director of Urban Planning and Development is a new title, we're not adding any new full-time employees, it's roughly in line with what the previous planner was making. And it's really kind of a titling change and an organizational responsibility change to, to meet Danielle's incredible experience in state or in federal government in much bigger municipalities, in some ways she's coming onboard with more municipal experience than a good bulk of the staff. So we're incredibly lucky to have her and an amazing skill set to bring into the organization.
And there are questions, comments? How would the council like to proceed?
I'll make a motion, move to ratify the appointment of Danielle Giff as the Director of Urban Planning and Development as an administrative employee, reporting to the city manager and deputy city manager in accordance with the city charter and applicable personnel policies, effective immediately.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Allies in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Danielle, welcome.
Yay.
And yay, for the record. Matter, agenda number 18, a public hearing in action on the request of the city manager to accept the proposal for a clerk of the works for the Merrill Lane Extension Project, sorry, that's council order number 092507. Charlie, real quickly, I believe it may make sense to table this matter.
Yeah, I think I'd like to table, we only received one proposal. We did receive another one that was a little late from another organization, but the cost of this one, at 20% of potential project cost, I feel like is a little, and in the near term, you know, I may want to take this a little later, in the near term, we've only promised a construction road and temporary power access to the judiciary for the courthouse development, which will start probably in early 2026. So, you know, that is very much in line with our Public Works Department, that we can handle under current budgets with the Capitol Roads account. So, you know, this finalization of paving and all these other pieces on a .22 mile road, .1 of which is already paved and accessible up there, just $300,000 is just too much to engage a clerk of the works at this stage. But I'm, I'm not saying no clerk of the works going forward. I might want to kind of re-put out scope, do some direct outreach to some additional and local construction operators, and a lot of people locally have good experience managing especially a small road construction project of this type. But in the near term, we're, all we have to do by January is, is get the, it's construction road capable and temporary power, which, you know, is, is where I think we should remain.
Correct. Any thoughts or questions, council?
Move to table indefinitely?
Second question.
Can't, want to re-table.
Sorry. I know that there's no discussion, I don't know. Table indefinitely in my world means it's dead, so I'm, I'm just concerned.
It just, there's no, there's no time to bring it back yet.
It's not defined when it will come back.
I, I understand it, it's, it's not been my experience that that's what that means, so.
Let's find out. All those in favor? Opposed?
Let's, can we find out table indefinitely versus table until a time to be spent?
Absolu-, absolutely, and, you know.
That's how you kill a bill.
We'll have a, we'll have a larger city council workshop conversation about the courthouse project, and I'll probably be bringing something to the next council meeting too, so.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to, Matt, yes, you may.
To table indefinitely is a phrase used in parliamentary procedure, most often in legislative organizational meetings where a motion is set aside without any specific date or time.
And all I can say is, the nation's legislature, that's how you kill a bill, so I.
Well, that's just politics, we don't do politics here.
I will need to hear that.
Okay, well, that's new, that's new for me. Matter, agenda number 19, council order number 092508, public hearing potential action on the proposed ordinance to provide for and regulate the annual issuance of local licenses for adult-use cannabis establishments and amendments to City, to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, licenses and permits to add related licensing fees and verbiage for the proposed ordinance. Do we have an update?
We have an update. After the last workshop, we, or before the last workshop, we added the impact fee to the ordinance, both the planning board. Both the planning board and our city attorneys both had issues with that. So we have reworked the cannabis ordinance, and we've removed that. The, the Redmond and Winchell recommended we make it a licensing fee and not an impact fee. So that's, that's basically where I am now. I have the planning board comments from a few weeks ago when I took that to the planning board. I've synthesized those all down into a one-page synopsis that I'm gonna take to Redmond and Winchell's lawyers. I just got it today, unfortunately, so it's not in your packet, I apologize. And then any comments or concerns you all give me tonight, I'm gonna take those to the lawyers as well and try to get one last edit and hopefully have it for next month. The one thing I, I really wanted to look, I was looking forward, or looking forward in this was, what, what would you like to have for a dollar amount on the licensing fee?
Well, I think it's probably most appropriate to have that discussion at our workshop in October.
Yep.
So, but thank you for that report and updating it, but I think for the scope of tonight's meeting, I think the proposals, we'll just table it.
Yeah.
Not indefinitely until next month. And we can, you can maybe send out those materials to the council that you've discussed, and we can have them prepared for the October workshop.
I apologize if they weren't in the packet, I.
Don't worry about it.
Didn't get them in time.
We're gonna table it anyway.
You think October is a reasonable?
I think we'll have it done for October.
Yeah, it sounds like we're getting pretty close.
Yeah, we, we were at the point where, like, we might have been able to push to get it in by Friday, but then we'd have to delay the whole packet, and everything else is prepared, and it's like, we'll do the workshop, you know, we'll get you the kind of final edits. I think in general, what we've heard from council and planning board and others, folks want to limit the amount to around three, or that seems to be no more than that. The licensing fee, I think, will be the big thing, the initial investment. We don't want to do merit-based, because that could lead us to some, some litigation potential issues. So we'll talk at that October sixth meeting once we have kind of a close-to-final document. And then I also want to do one last round, once we're there, with kind of the double check with OCP, the Office of Cannabis Policy, to like, hears, and then we can bring it to that October meeting, and council can say yea or nay, but feel like they've had a pretty good amount of, we've probably held seven or eight workshops on this subject, multiple council meetings, multiple standing workshops. So I think we're getting there, I'd like to get this done so we can move on to the next one.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the city staff kind of bouncing back and forth between us and the planning board, and, you know, you're doing a lot of hard work, so thank you. With that, I believe maybe we'd want to do a motion to table it.
Move to table this adult-use establishment licensing ordinance item till the October meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
You as well. Agenda item number twenty. Council order number zero-nine-two-five-zero-nine. Request of the Economic Development Director to accept the proposal for a TIF district redesign consultant.
Good evening, councilors. Twyla Fisher, Economic Development Director. And yes, as, as mentioned tonight, the proposal is for you to approve bringing on the consultant who scored the highest in our, our second round of bids for this. When I came onboard, I was told that there was one round that received no bids for the TIF redesign, and so we issued another one. And the proposal tonight is for council to approve the award for the TIF redesign bid in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred to Ms. Reagan LaRochelle, whose proposal scored the highest. And she also submitted the lowest bid, and she brings compelling prior TIF experience working with main municipalities. And if you read in your packet, everything else that was in her proposal, she's very, very qualified. I actually am quite honored that she submitted a proposal to us, because she just, not only has a few on projects right now as a consultant, other places in Maine, but just has, this has become her niche, TIF redesign and TIF evaluation and helping municipalities understand TIF and know how to stay in compliance and evaluate the effectiveness of it. And that's exactly where we're at right now, we need to, we need someone to help us do that. And it's a good thing, both for the proponents of TIF and those who are questioning it. Either way, this gives us a scorecard, it gives us a way to look at how it's doing and how we move forward in the best interest of the city.
Yeah, I'm highly supportive of this, I think in the research I've done, asking around, this is a very well-regarded consultant here, thank you to Twyla for really, this is like, in our project management team, this is tier-one, plus, plus, plus. We had a fair amount of debt service drop off the TIF this year. And in part of my looking into the TIFs, you could tell, it hasn't been since like 2014, 2015, since they've actually been edited and redesigned. And when I looked at the full history of the TIF project, it's like a history of economic development in Ellsworth. And when it was, if original TIFs were created, how they were edited every few years to kind of be most in line with current projects and current economic development thinking. I mean, also with, you know, with the huge amount of growth we're experiencing in the city in terms of valuation, where, you know, an analysis of where those TIF districts stand, where we might want to expand TIF districts, that could help with things like housing and credit enhancement agreements for housing. Belfast has had a lot of success with that and adding hundreds and hundreds of units there. Do we want to do credit enhancement agreements for tractor areas? Probably not, we're getting a fair amount of tractor stores here now. And there's, to your point, Twyla, on pros and cons of those pieces. And if we wanted to think about dissolving the TIF and the consequences of that, both for revenue sharing and, you know, and the, the allocation of those resources, that could also be considered as well. But it's really kind of, again, some of this foundational work in the city that hasn't been looked at in a long time, is a really important tool that we need to do. I think that's, talking to councillor Beal and councillor Mote, you know, that's what they did previously, they hired a consultant to kind of do this type of work, to edit and redesign. It's a very legalistic-type document. We have a lot of currently, you know, there's a surplus in the TIF fund, and there may be good reason to keep it there and not use it, you know, compared to last year. There was, you know, a fair amount of debt service followed off, but we could allocate it to specific things that it's allowed for based on 2015 calculations. But I think it's really time to kind of pump the brakes, reanalyze what current council community priorities are and how that funding could be spent. It could be potentially reallocated to new road projects or a new debt service on something. We could create new districts, there's also the mention of a downtown portage district in the current TIF that says we should think about activating that, so we could spend TIF money downtown, which we currently can't do. Maybe that could be something, but looking forward to this consultant coming onboard and giving council the options on how to edit, redesign, reallocate, or potentially dissolve as well.
Great, thank you, Charlie. Does anyone have any questions for Twyla or Charlie in this regard? Comments to councillor Smith?
Calling out for comments there. One of the things I want to highlight in looking through her proposal is task two, TIF 101 and community discussion. I think it's gonna be really important, and I'm glad that this is included as a key piece of letting folks know and understand what a TIF is, what the value it is, how it implicates, or how it, the implications it has for revenue sharing that we get and for the budget. And also, a special ask, I need, I understand TIFs, I need to better understand the credit enhancement districts or agreements.
Agreements.
Because they are distinct and different, but sometimes they're pulled into the same conversation. So I was just happy to see that, I think that's gonna be a really important part of moving this forward.
Yeah, absolutely, you could, we don't really have credit enhancement agreements now, except for like with Oriole Way, I believe, with the senior housing.
The housing.
The housing.
You mentioned it as a potential.
Yeah, so I should also note, like, this, this wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily, we could redesign our test for different types of uses and other pieces, but that also doesn't mean like the city staff now has these other tools. Like, it's gonna continue to be a council conversation on every single piece. If we did want to do a credit, even after we changed the TIF potentially to allow for a credit enhancement agreement, you know, if such were to come up, it would be coming back to the council.
Right.
You know, it would be for this per.
More reason to have that incorporated into the broad outreach and understandings of what the tools are.
And I love what you're saying about that community discussion outreach. I think there's a lot of misconceptions around TIF that are kind of floated around there. And once we don't have Tammy TIF to help, I know, in the last two years ago's budget process.
I hear a new award coming.
You are forever going to be Tammy TIF.
Oh, my gosh. We had whiteboards up, and it comes in, it comes out, and I was just, we can do a more layman's version of that, too.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Nate. I think because TIFs are such a great tool for the city, and there are so many misconceptions of people thinking that it provides, it's incentive, but it's not money that's given to people that come in into the TIF district. It's, the, the plus is for the city itself, it's not for the person that comes in. So, but people think that, you know, as soon as you say that, they're thinking credit enhancement, as Nancy just said, and it isn't credit enhancement, it's just, it's providing assets to the city of Ellsworth that we can use. And as I had said before, as far as economic development, municipalities have very, very little that they can do to increase economic development in their municipalities. It's one of my pet peeves that the state takes the sales tax, but they don't help with the generation of the economic development that creates that sales tax for them. So this, I'm, I wish I was still gonna be here, I would love to participate in this.
You can, as a citizen.
Right, we'll have public meetings.
We have a citizen meeting, yeah. Very excited for this.
Councilors, questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll do this one if I could.
I was gonna say, I was gonna let LaRochelle do this one, yeah.
Move to approve the request of the Economic Development Director to accept the request for proposals from Reagan LaRochelle to review and redesign the existing tax increment financing TIF districts with a total cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars from the professional services account of the economic development budget.
Tammy TIF seconds?
Pink shoes. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Twyla.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twenty-one, we're on the last page of the agenda here. Council order number zero-nine-two-five-one-zero. Request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for mineral screening and supply.
Do we have the Public Works Director here tonight?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Mike Harris, Public Works Director. So this first item in front of you is for the winter sand screening. We did put it out to bid this year, we extended the contract to the contractor last year, but we did not, to do that this year, we put it out to bid, posted on the website on MMA, sent it to three bidders, we received two bids back. And the low bid was from RF Jordan. And they met qualifications of the bid, and therefore, we would like to request that they are awarded that staying screening contract for this year. Their bid came in approximately seventy-six thousand, and Dugess' bid came in, I believe, eighty-one thousand. There was an alternate bid in there that we're not interested in.
Councillor Mote?
What were we paying for this?
For eighty-five? Last year?
I believe last year, didn't they hold the price last year at the previous?
Yeah, they held the price.
So we got the kind of same price for two years in a row, and that's, I remember that, that was my first meetings, and then this, now it's gone up.
Councillor Beal?
Are you gonna, so RF Jordan wants to buy the tails, are you gonna let me do that?
Yeah, we're not in favor of selling them the tailings for two dollars. We feel that that is an extremely low amount of money for them to get the tailings for. So we'll probably negotiate separately with them for a better price on selling the tailings.
Mike, I don't understand what you're saying, tan.
So when you screen the material that comes from the screen, after you screen the sand, it's called tailings, and it's.
Tailings, that was the word, okay.
And it's basically stone that you can use to crush and make crushed stone and things like that. So they want to buy tailings for two dollars a cubic yard, and then they'll crush it and sell it for, what's the price on?
Thirty-eight to forty-five.
So they want to buy it from us for two dollars, then crush it and sell it for thirty-eight to forty dollars. I'm not in favor of that.
And that's an alternate, they're not requiring it if we sign the bid?
No, that's just a request that they made as part of their bid.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from the council on this bid?
Do we have use for the tailings?
Yeah, I mean, we will either renegotiate with them to sell it to them separately, or we'll use, I mean, we're gonna be doing the, the construction road, we're gonna need some of it up there. So yes, we'll, we will have use for the.
Okay.
Ask that same question.
Councilors, anyone else? Not hearing anything? Do we have a motion? Councillor Mote?
Move to approve the acceptance of the bid for the FY 2026 Mineral Screening and Supply Contract for the screening of seven thousand cubic yards of winter sand and five thousand cubic yards of four-inch minus gravel to RF Jordan in the amount of five dollars and fifty cents per cubic yard and seven dollars and fifty cents per cubic yard respectively.
Second?
Give a second, further discussion? All those in favor? Ananmas, thank you, Mike, but you have to stay there. Councillor, agenda number twenty-two. Council order number zero-nine-two-five-one-one. Request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for an excavator.
Yep, so again, we were approved to purchase an excavator. So we put that out to bid, we posted it on the website, MMA, we sent it to various bidders, we received bids back. And the low bid for that piece of equipment was by Jordan Equipment in the amount of one ninety-six, five ninety-five oh three. So that's what you have in front of you. We do have concerns with this bid, and so I would like to take a moment, if we could, to discuss that. Because there's a couple of things to note, when we went and, you know, every time we do a bid, we go back and we look at all the bids, and we go down through, and we try to make sure they match the specs, and everything is kind of apples to apples. And so, so John Deere, Unified Construction had a bid in with John Deere, but they were missing some pieces. When we looked at this bid, this bid met the majority of the specs, but we have some, a couple of issues that we think are important to note. So for one, this is the first big excavator that Bobcat has supplied, has created. They bought out a company so they could get into bigger excavators. There are none of these units up here, this will be the first unit that they will sell up here, and there's actually none close to us. I called and asked if they had one I could go look at somewhere. And the closest we found was, he said we could go to Lincolnville, they have a one forty-five down there that we could look at, which is not a one sixty-five. So that concerns me, that, you know, we're gonna be guinea pigs for the test run of these excavators. The other thing that concerns me is service, the service is not local. So I'm worried about that. Also, they don't list a block heater in their specs. And in the wintertime, when we're gonna be using this machine, it is gonna be outside. If it doesn't have a block heater, that's an issue. And then I called the rep, because the spec says that it should be delivered within ninety days. He said he thinks he can maybe meet that, but he has to call his salespeople, and he has not returned my call, my request, to definitely, definitively say that they can deliver it within ninety days. So it met the majority of the specs, but I have serious concerns about it. And so I'm asking the council, at the request of my Public Works guys, because there are more experts on this than I am, to consider possibly going with a Volvo unit that is in stock and has a proven track record, has more horsepower. But it's at the council's discretion as to where they want to go with it.
Do we want to hear from Brian, and maybe why the alternative unit he'd like considered?
For the record, before we get into that, could you state the bid amounts?
Yep. So Milton Cat was one of the bidders, they came in at two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-seven-eighteen, United Construction. United Construction came in at 214,000, that's the John Deere, but it doesn't include two of the attachments that we asked for, so you would, those, those attachments add another $9,000 or so to the bid. Then you had Chadwick Bay Ross came in at 217,433. Jordan Equipment came in at 196,595, and Beauregard Equipment came in at 221,600.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
And we have 250,000 is what we've set aside in the bond for this.
Which was the company with the Volvo that you were interested in?
Chadwick.
Chadwick Bay Ross. And you guys can give them your opinion on why you...
I, like you said, the, the Bobcat on the smaller machines, uh, they've been pretty decent, but, uh, it's a new machine, and there's gonna be problems with it, and we've been checking some, uh, forms, forums, that they, some, they hit several, several problems with it, overheating, uh, the wiring going bad and not starting, uh, the quick coupler, which is the pin grabber, that you can change buckets, one thing or another, uh, the pin is not strong enough and it keeps breaking, all these issues. And a couple of the municipalities said that they'd never buy another one again, 'cause they've had so many problems with them. And again, the service, uh, it's not proven that they have a road service guy that's local, it's either coming from Southern Maine or from New Hampshire. And Chadwick Bay Ross has one in Bangor, they have actually three guys up there that usually when we call, they hear either that day or first thing the next morning, they've had superior luck with Volvo and decent luck with, with John Deere. And with the brand-new machine that, you know, you're spending $200,000 on, I can't see risking, it's only $17,000 difference in price and over, we're gonna keep this machine almost 15 years, 10 to 15, uh, it's, the cost savings is, I think, could be proven to go with a machine that's been proven reputable and sturdy. Is there anything?
Nate's been operating excavators for more years than I can count, so...
Couple. So I, I'd rather know my machine than get to know my machine when I buy one. It's, it's a lot of money. And $17,000, we're, we're renting a machine right now, um, and if they can't guarantee that we can have that in 90 days, the amount of money that we're renting that machine for three months, we'll pay for that $17,000, and I feel that it would be better for us to put that money into something that we own, instead of giving that money away to something that we don't own, and then we still have to pay the money for it. It's almost like you're, you're buying a new car, but they can't give it to you for three months, and you're gonna pay a rental car, rental company $15,000 to have a car for three months, and then you're gonna give it back, and then pay $15,000 for your car, so it's, it's, it's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at with it, um, on that.
And not get the car you want. And not get the car you want.
And not get the car you want, right? I mean, and, and it's, you know, it's, it's not a fact of that, you know, all the machines, all the companies are all, all fairly good machines, uh, companies to make machines, but I've run the Bobcats, and they're not, the mini ones, um, are, have problems, and these big ones, like I said, I'd, I'd rather know that you're gonna spend that money on something that's proven, and I don't believe that they're proven for me, um, they're not around, they just started making them, so, rather not have to put the money into being guinea pigs, like I said, you know, like, we, we have it 15 years, it's a long time to have problems that we can't rectify.
And the other thing with the Bobcats, they recommended, they, one of the attachments that they were gonna supply us was a ditching bucket, tilting bucket?
The quick coupler, the, the pin grabber, it's a hydraulic pin grabber, um, the one that they quoted us for that on that was for a...
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six to a 42-inch bucket, so...
But the bucket thing...
They wanna sell us a cleanup bucket that's 60 inches. That's a heavy bucket, so if they're, we're only having this quick coupler that has problems all the time anyway, and we're going from a coupler that only is recommended for that bucket, those two size buckets, five feet isn't gonna do it when you're full, and, you know, it's just, it's too much strain on it, so that was an initial...
So to summarize, like, this is not something that we do lightly. We understand the procurement policy, we understand the importance of low bid, but we also understand the importance of having a piece of equipment that you can count on and that you feel you're gonna get your value out of. And, um, and, you know, when you're talking about 200-plus thousand dollars and hoping that, you know, you're gonna get the life out of it you want, I'm really uncomfortable being a guinea pig, because really, Bobcat didn't make the 165. They bought Dusan, which is another company that makes them, and then they just put the Bobcat logo and paint on it, and so it's whatever the council decides they wanna do, and we don't do this frivolously, we do it because we think it's the best investment for the city and for what we have coming up with the construction road, and, and we do serious work, and we're gonna be doing more serious work, and we wanna make sure the, the equipment we use is gonna be up to that.
Great. Thank you all for presenting that. Any comments, questions from counselors? Counselor Smith?
Thank you, I have, I have both. Um, when I'm listening to your concerns about the, the pin and the bucket, I'm seeing safety concerns, and you didn't mention that, but I'm assuming if that doesn't do its job that not only, anyways.
You're correct.
Yes.
Okay.
We should've mentioned that, but you're correct.
It's okay, I got it for you.
She's looking out for you.
Well, I, like, so my, um, I was married to a man who's an excavator operator, so I understand. Anyways, there are stories, but those are for another time.
No, no, go ahead.
They are good, so he could, he could pick up, he could, he was a pump truck at that time, but he could pick up a beer bottle with the, with the, um, geez, it's been so long, I forgot what the thing is called.
The thumb?
Thank you. The claw. And, and he was impressing my dad the first time he met him, and it impressed him, so that's one story, you get that one.
Can the Volvo pick up beer bottles?
We could tell you no.
Who's your husband, who's together? Pick up quarters. Who's the team?
I see the competition.
Here we go.
Next, Litchfield, or, or Litchfield, the Ellsworth Fair will get going on this. Mary, you've lost control of this meeting.
Never had it.
Second family story to reinforce the point you're making, one of my sons is a car salesman, and I was asking him about this cool car, and he said, "Never buy the first year of a car model, because they've gotta work out the kinks." Having owned a 1985 Dodge Caravan, where the side door fell off, 'cause they hadn't figured out how to do those yet, I support the need to, like, let somebody else figure out what the problems are. All of that aside, one of the questions I have for you is, in the chart of costs off to the side, it says alternate, alternate, alternate is warranty, and then a $229 figure with tax. I don't know what that applies to or what that means.
So they would do an additional warranty?
Who? 'Cause I can't, it's not...
Uh, I believe it's in the Chadwick Bay Ross as a bid alternate.
Okay, I just wanna understand all the numbers I got here.
Yeah, so, oh, all right, so part of the issue that we have here is they did include tax in their bid, which is the 229, 392.41 here. We put that off to the side because that was what their bid was, so we didn't wanna not capture that.
Okay.
But the, when you take the tax off, their bid is 217,433, and then during the meeting, they offered to add an additional warranty on, but we didn't add it.
Okay, and all of that relates to the line with the 217?
Yep.
Which is what we're considering?
It's on page 73.
So it looks like, it looks like United Construction gave you an alternate for warranty.
Okay, yeah, I can't tell if those two go together or if that's each.
Okay, so total of all bid alternates, 2189, 214, that doesn't make sense either, where it's written here. So I'm not sure what you're getting, what you're talking about.
So, page 73 on the Chadwick Bay Ross, it breaks it down, I think.
Oh, okay.
They might be looking at the packet.
I'm just, I'm looking at page 67 with the chart.
Yeah.
I was looking for the United one, 'cause that's the one that has the, they must've offered up.
So if those are two separate comments, it makes sense, 'cause they're lined up against two different...
This is kind of...
Okay. So, okay, so both of those...
Right, okay. Yeah, so the United bid, they had $2,189 as a bid alternate for an extended warranty, which brought their price to 214,000. The original price was 211,811. Issue with the John Deere bid is they didn't include two attachments in their bid.
Okay, so two different...
So if you add those two attachments into their bid, it becomes...
All right, so just extending the table over would make that clear, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, that is all the storytelling I have and questions for this evening.
What are the two attachments they didn't include?
The Ripper Tooth and the Tilting Bucket?
The digging bucket.
The digging bucket, yeah.
You need those for excavators, right?
Should have.
Yeah.
All the other bids had them, so...
It was, it was actually the, the bucket, the trenching bucket with no teeth that we wanted to have included in that, and they didn't do that, everybody else did. And it was in, it was actually in the bid spec itself, and it wasn't put in there.
Yeah, we requested it in the bid spec, when we sent the bids out.
Any other questions or comments, counselors? Counselor White?
Um, what did you initially, during the budget season, estimate that this would cost?
Two-hundred-and-fifty.
So we're under.
All right.
Two thousand.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? How would the council like to proceed on this matter?
I'd like to make a comment if I could.
You may.
I think the city of Ellsworth needs an excavator of this size. I was surprised you didn't have one. I know you've been renting one seasonally for $42 or $400 a month, somewhere, 42 or 4400. Um, so I, I have to say that I'm in favor of the city purchasing an excavator. However, I think you've bought too many toys in the past, and I think I can't support spending this money, because I think the city has bought too many toys, um, including a $600,000 pump truck. Therefore, I can't support the excavator, even though I think the city needs it, but I think the city has spent way too much money, um, for toys to work with.
This is bigger than one of the toys in the sandbox, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Uh, and I just wanna note that I'm fully in favor of the Volvo, I, they've, I don't know, I don't need any further reasons to spend a little bit more on a product that we have better feelings about, and we know we have better service for, um, so I don't, that's just my two cents before a motion's made.
Mike, do you wanna offer up a motion with the, the new price in Volvo?
I made one.
Okay.
Am I doing it?
Nope.
No.
Okay. So I had to reword it.
Yeah.
So move to approve the purchase of a 160-class excavator from Chadwick Bay Ross in the amount of $217,433.64, with funding provided through the bond anticipation note approved by the city council for equipment purchases.
Second?
Any further discussion from council?
Acknowledging this is coming in below budget, and that's always helpful. I don't think the budget was beyond reasonable, I think that's what we thought it was gonna be, and it's always good to come in below that. Appreciate it.
Counselor Stone?
While we're talking equipment and capital expenses, I had the pleasure of seeing up close the VAC truck.
Oh, that's right.
Which was parked outside of Fogtown when we were working on the, the water line replacements, and first, it was really cool. Really cool watch, but also, it was, uh, obvious that the team was nimble, you know, they were waiting for it to show up, it was quick, it was used, it was out, we weren't waiting for another company to show up, and I don't know too many more details than that, but it...
No, but the value of that piece of equipment, I can explain it to you. They can, they know now, because they weren't familiar with VAC trucks, but I've been familiar with VAC trucks for many years, Michelle can tell you that, but now that they've seen it in action, like, it's, it's legit.
And I don't know, just from a, to your point in the safety perspective, I was out there with the teams this spring on a, it was obviously very wet, and they were, you know, they had the trench boxes, but you could see this just little tiny pump i- in this ground, and it was just like, what, what is that even doing? Um, and there's a safety component to being able to move this much stuff, you know, especially in that, that type of thing, I mean, I think they had two or three...
Yeah.
...water mains they had to replace during rainstorms in the middle of the night, like, having that there. And the VAC truck had actually been included in multiple previous bonds, just the city never, so, you know, a long time coming on this piece. Plus, that's another thing, we're not renting.
Nope, that's what I'm saying. Like, I made the case, I mean, you saw the PowerPoint.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so I think we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you gotta stand up there, one more.
Nope. I can do that.
Agenda number 23, Council Order Number 092512, request of the Public Works Director to award the bid for sidewalk plow equipment.
So with this particular piece of equipment of equipment, we received the bids, and so we put it out to bid, um, we sent it to, to different people, including, um, friend and friend here in Ellsworth, 'cause they now, um, supply Bobcat, and I told them, they, they asked me to come over, and I went through front of the place with them, talked to them about their product lines, and I told them that if we had a bid coming out, that I would send them the bid, and so we did. We received, uh, multiple bids back, and the Bobcat machine that they sent in was the low bid by a lot, it was a $60,000 machine, and the other machines, I think the next closest was $177,000. Um, but, you know, and I think Steve was there at the, um, bid opening, and we discussed a little bit, but we don't feel that the machine that, that, um, they put forth for us, they put forward a loader and not necessarily a sidewalk plow, is, is gonna work for us. So then we had some further discussion with Charlie and Roddy with Parks and Rec, and the possibility that Parks and Rec is gonna be more involved with maybe some sidewalk plowing opportunities in the wintertime instead of Public Works Highway. And so after all that discussion, we kinda came to a place where we would prefer to reject the bids, and then work out who's doing what and what piece of equipment is gonna be best for that task, and let the Parks and Rec department have, um, you know, a serious part in that discussion, uh, since they may end up being the ones that are gonna handle some sidewalk duties. So that's my request, is to reject it.
Yeah, we've kind of, a subunit of the Public Works Highway team that's been focused on a lot of, um, you know, the Parks and Rec type activities, and then as we switch toward the winter, we're just discussing, you know, maybe we kind of have them really focus on sidewalks, parking lots, other pieces, um, you know, while the other team kind of gets the bigger ways, which is obviously a priority, and there's a lot of cross-collaboration, but now that Roddy's here, and that team can take a look at our current equipment, we have one sidewalk plow that's still usable, and, but broke down last year.
Yeah, we have a Trakless, and we have a John Deere tractor, the John Deere tractor is rarely at the end of its life. The Trakless still works, but the John Deere is pretty bad off, and it's, has no heat in it, so, so it is not, not a fun atmosphere for whoever's operating that thing when it's running, so we don't think that's a good thing.
Yeah, so the teams kinda had a little bit of hesitancy on this one, I think we got a little time before, we know winter's coming, so we wanna get those sidewalks plowed. We also have the street scan, which has gone forward on, uh, analyzing all of our city roads, which will dictate a lot of kind of condition maintenance, but it also, we added per council discussion sidewalks to that piece, too, um, so we'll full inventory, kind of where we're at in the sidewalks, what the full scope of this is, and now that Roddy's here, and, um, you know, that's, and Public Works wasn't totally pumped about this, let's just take another bite at the apple, come back out, and it's, Roddy and I talked about Sugarloaf, you know, they kinda buy the piece of equipment for the job, so it's, he's a little new to the, like, hey, you gotta send it out to these bids, and then put the specs, and get to, that's a very important part of the transparency in the public process. Still wondering in terms of, like, Sourcewell and some other of the, like, collaborative bidders, on how do we get the right machine, uh, but also get to there, you know, in the right period of time, so we don't, um, lose out on getting the right machine, at the same time keeping costs as a core component, something we're thinking about, too.
Yeah, and the other issue that we ran into was, other than the Bobcat, everything was way over budget, 'cause we only budgeted $100,000.
as a core component, something we're thinking about too.
Yeah, and the other issue that we ran into was, other than the Bobcat, everything was way over budget because we only budgeted a hundred thousand out of the bond for it, so...
Could you disclose for the record all of the bids?
HP Fairfield, total bid price for the trackless MT-7 was two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Friend and Friend for the Bobcat L-35 was ninety-four thousand-six-twenty-eight-fifty-three. Beauregard Equipment, base bid one-seventy-three-hundred, bid alternate, which is a five-year warranty, was seventy-three-hundred. Total bid was one-seventy-seven-six-hundred if you included the alternate for McLean or McLean, however you want to pronounce that, MV-6. And then Allied Equipment put in a bid for a hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars for a multi-hog CX MK-11. So as you can see, we have three bids, one-seventy-seven to two-eleven, and then one bid at ninety-four, which was the Friend and Friend.
So we'll, we'll look more into it, you know, these are heavy use, you've seen the ones that broke down a couple times, then we couldn't get to the sidewalks, so it's also important to have these, but High Street in a snowstorm trying to get to those sidewalks, we don't want a...
No, it's a serious safety issue when the sidewalks can't dip out. People are walking in the street, it's not a good scene, so it's a high priority to make sure the sidewalks are able to be cleared off after a storm.
It's good to hear that.
Any other questions for Mike or Charlie on this one? If not, do I have a motion? Counselor Stein has a motion.
I doubt one was coming.
We don't want to bring this back at any particular time. Move to reject all bids received for sidewalk plows and for their direct Public Works and Parks and Recreation Departments to revise the bid specs and solicit additional equipment bidders. The revised bid process should seek equipment proposals more in line with the city's winter operational needs and return to the council for consideration at the October meeting.
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
You can now go sit down. Agenda item number twenty-four, adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second? There we go.
All those in favor? So adjourned.